Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 17th. It is 5:30 and I am calling us to order. We have a full dius tonight. And as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney, or attorneys as it may be, on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene recess or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It's 5:30 and we are called to order. For the public, this is actually an extension of the September 10th meeting. Thank you very much for bringing me some information. We had several items. That was a really hefty agenda that night and so we had asked to move some things to this night. So that's why you'll see that it's not a normal agenda and we aren't going through our reports and the pledge and all that stuff. We're just really trying to finish up what we started last Tuesday. As we go into that, I do want to bring everyone's attention to the fact that on page two of this agenda, under individual consideration, Item 3A, which I am going to spare you and not read, is a very long, we're going to, council would be considering, an ordinance having to do with our boards and commissions. That item is pulled for tonight. We will discuss it in the workshop, but I believe there's going to be some substantial changes, so we'll get that cleaned up and we'll take care of that. I'll work with the city manager to see if we want to put it on the 24th or October 8th or whatever. I do want to mention to the folks that we have here from the city attorney's office, when we're done, I'm happy to give you a copy. I've pretty well bled quite a bit on this, on easy stuff, and then there'll be some things that we need to, as a part of the workshop discussion, there may be some additional changes to it. But we will not be discussing individual consideration, Item 3A. And since I've already made you turn over to page two, I was going to go ahead and do individual consideration, Item 3B. I think that one will be fairly fast and we may kind of just nearly work this thing backwards. So I am on individual consideration, Item 3B. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2019-81 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving and adopting the investment policy and investment strategies attached as Exhibit A, approving the list of qualified brokers attached as Exhibit B, making various provisions related to the subject and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, and so the Public Funds Investment Act requires that this policy be reviewed and adopted by council every single year. This is a very easy item. They have made no changes to the Public Funds Investment Act and we have made no changes to our policy. We also have not changed our broker list. So I'm basically bringing you the policy that we are currently working under with the same broker list.
And Ms. Waldron, for the community at home, really, this is, it's public funds. We invest and save things. We make sure we're doing things legal. This is all about keeping us completely legal with the community's money.
Mm-hmm.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Waldron?
And following along.
And following along.
And following along.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Just to let everybody know, did you attend your eight hours of required training this year?
I, yes. I will have my certification before it's due, yep.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
Can I motion to approve?
Yes. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. The ordinance, the policy's approved, the resolution is approved, and while we're sticking with the easy stuff, we're going to do 2H, received presentation on the City of Bastrop emergency shelter open house being conducted on Saturday, September 21st. Chief Alkell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. In connection with our proclamation last month, this is Disaster Preparedness Month, and we are partnering with the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team, and on Saturday, we're going to have our first open house. We're very excited. We're going to actually do an exercise Friday and set our shelter up with all 50 beds and see what the logistics are and confirm that we know what we know, and we're sure we'll discover some things that we weren't sure about. But to do that in order so that we can provide the best services to our community if and when the time comes that we have to activate the shelter and house our people there. But in accordance on the spirit of that, on Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00, we're going to have our open house. We will be there as our emergency management component, and what we're going to do is we're going to talk about shelter operations, and while it's a place to stay, important is having a plan prior to that. The Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team is going to give classes and information on preparing a go-bag, and also we will have IT support there, so that we'll have laptops there, so if people don't have access to Wi-Fi, they will be able to go online and file an electronic disaster plan that they can get anywhere in the world where they're at, because we may not always have that binder with us, but their information will be there. We will also have a scanner there to help scan important documents, and we're going to provide jump drives, that was courtesy of the Water Department, to support our community to make sure that not only will they have important invited documents with them, but it'll also be scanned on electric medium so that they'll have access to that. Got a little bit of slide changing, it wouldn't, excuse me. I was like, it's not changing. So the Bastrop Fire Department, we're in the process of trying to procure the burn house, ESD number one, had sent it in for maintenance, and we're hoping to get it back in time, but even if it's not there, we're going to do some educational purposes for younger children and adults on how to be safe for fire, safety and fire prevention. The food pantry's going to be there. They're going to talk about non-perishable items, and they're going to have a cook-off. The Red Cross will be there, and they're going to do a pillowcase project, which is similar to a go-bag, but it's designed for children and so that they can have comfort items, and take what would be important to them when they're going through such a traumatic event and give them some comforts to help cope. And then the co-ed is going to be there, and they're going to be providing information on how businesses locally, and co-ed stands for community organizations, active in disaster, and how locally what we have available to us, so that the mindset is, is we know the cavalry's supposed to come somewhere between 48, 72 hours, depending on how big is big and how bad is bad throughout the state, but in the event that we don't get help from the state right away, what can we do to sustain ourselves locally? And that is the driving force behind what the co-ed is. And so they will be there. We partner with Bastrop Independent School District. I'm going to show you one of the videos, or many videos, that we've been having going on through Preparedness Month about our shelter, but we came up with a, they're going to pitch this out in Peach Star Thursday for us, but today and Thursday, they're doing Stuff the Bag for the elementary children, and so we're doing that, and it's in English and in Spanish. It's a bilingual pamphlet, and we're doing that to reach people that also may not have internet access or access to Peach Star on their phones, and we're also doing this in hopes that we can accommodate some of the people that are, and the numerous families that we know in the district that are without a home right now and that are homeless and making it day-to-day, and so that they will understand that those resources are also available to them. So we've really maximized our efforts to put out the information as quickly as possible and provide as much information and services from 10:00 o'clock to 2:00 this Saturday. If you'll go ahead and start the deal, please. Hello, citizens of Bastrop. I'm James Alkell, and I have the honor of being your Assistant City Manager of Public Safety and Community Support. September is recognized as National Preparedness Month, where we bring awareness to the crucially important subject of preparing your family household and all that goes with that whenever disaster strikes. Fires, floods, freezing temperatures, hurricanes, and unthinkable, unforeseeable events could disrupt anyone's life at a moment's notice. I want to take this opportunity to inform you on a very important aspect of emergency management, and that is planning for evacuation of your home and the emergency shelter opportunities we have in place here in the City of Bastrop. In 2018, the city utilized a grant from FEMA to construct an emergency shelter. This shelter is approximately 5,935 square feet at a cost of just almost $1.46 million and has the ability to provide safe lodging accommodations for 50 people. The shelter is located at 1311 Linden Street in the City of Bastrop, which is right next door to the Public Works Yard. On a day-to-day basis, the shelter is utilized by the wonderful people of the Bastrop Senior Center for their gatherings, activities, and fellowship. The great thing about this setup is that the members of the Senior Center are trained and ready to assist with the activation of the emergency shelter on a moment's notice. They act as a built-in volunteer base that will augment city staff with various aspects of our shelter operations. A very important point that I want everyone to consider is that while the city-operated emergency shelter is a great resource to have, the absolute best option for you is to prepare family, friends, or other resources that you could utilize in the event of an evacuation. The shelter is equipped to meet your basic necessities, however, by no means will it afford you all of the comforts of home, which stands to reason whenever 50 people are engaged in communal living. As with any aspect of disaster preparation, the key word is "prepare." Call family members, friends, and other acquaintances who are close enough to provide shelter for you and your family, and talk through all of the details that would be important for you to call upon them to provide you with assistance. Discuss a plan. Consider special needs, such as pets, medical needs, and any other logistical support that would come into play if you had to be sheltered for 24 hours, 72 hours, weeks, or even a month. As we all know, Bastrop is no stranger to disasters, many of them displacing our county citizens from their homes, sometimes for long periods of time. While you think about what important documents, family treasures, emergency supplies, and a preparedness kit or a go-bag you'll need, also crafting to your family preparedness plan what your evacuation plan would be if you were unable to return home. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to this community service announcement, and I hope you have a safe and enjoyable day. Really, all the credit goes to multimedia department. Colin and Rick did a great job coming up with our Bastrop Preparedness Project logo. I thought the art was there, the Gatorade tag was very clever, and we're really working hard to not just verbally check the box for Disaster Preparedness Month, but to really do things and to let the community know that we are here to support them and where their tax dollars are going and what we want to do to, hoping that we never have to use it, but if we do, what we have in order to accommodate them. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Alkell. I want to call out one of our citizens, and she happens to be in the audience tonight, and that is Debbie Moore. When she saw that this item was on the agenda, she reached out to me and sent an email. She's associated with Ascension Catholic Church and talked about what they have available, the space that they have available, the services that they have, and wanted to make sure that Chief Alkell had that on the list. And I know that you appreciated that information, and I know we try to keep a running tab of all those possibilities.
Yes, Mayor, we have a shelter annex, and so in addition to Ascension Church, we have other locations that are available, and what it does is it tells us what type of facilities and logistics they have, how many people, number of bathrooms, whether they have a stove, kitchen or not, what type of notice they have, and so we keep that in our hip pocket, if you will, because if disaster strikes and we're not a destination city, but it's actually occurring in our community, there's a high probability that we're going to have more than 50 people that we need to take care of, and so we have not stopped keeping that in our toolkit.
I appreciate us keeping that accurate inventory. The other thing that the public should realize is that, Council, I know all of you are aware of the fact that the funding was from FEMA, and that F in FEMA is federal, which means that we could find ourselves housing 50 people. And it can be, that shelter can be activated, and everything may be perfectly fine in Bastrop. Something that comes to mind, of course, is obviously a hurricane that hits the coast. We could be a potential option. Just, things can happen. We want to be good neighbors. I would like to think if we ever had an issue and we were unable to open our shelter, that we know our community neighbors would open their shelter, so that's why it's important, and that's why we activate it on a regular basis to make sure that we are prepared. It's classic, you know, be prepared and hope you don't need it. So, thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, here's something kind of wacky. Let's go back to the beginning. We're on Item 2A, discussed letter received from Texas Department of Transportation regarding their concerns about the State Park Trail project. Mr. Job, I believe that's you, keeping you guys on your toes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So what we want to do is just bring this back to you guys, is we got a letter from Tech dot, let you have some policy discussion on the project and how you see it moving forward. In their letter, they basically asked a couple of questions. They said, "We decided to expand 21. What does that look like? If the trail had to be removed, that would be an expense that the city would have to bear at a later date, and we'd have to reimburse Camp O if that was done within the next 10 years." They also had some concerns about the alignment and the safety of crossing there at Chestnut and 21 and 95. And then I'm welcome here for any questions.
So, Mayor and Council, to put a little perspective to this, I think this project started probably 2014, 2015.
Yes.
It's funded through a Camp O grant, and essentially what that means is that they provide 75% of the funding and the city provides 25% of the funding.
It's 80/20.
80/20. And so it really has been broken into two parts, and one was that the city would pay for the design, and it's my understanding, because this history predates me, is that BDC would do the 20% match for construction. So a little over $100,000 was spent prior to my arrival that was spent on things like environmental alignment, those types of things.
About six, year to date, about $115,000 has been spent, or sorry, since the beginning of the project to now, about 115, about $65,000 for environmental, some pre-engineering to submit for the grant.
And we've spent roughly about $56,000?
That's about right, about 55, 56. 35 in engineering, and 20 as a down payment to Tech dot, $20,000, $6,000. If the project was to no longer ask, we would have to have that money back.
So we, when Tech dot reached out to us and said that they have some concerns about this project, we scheduled a meeting, and MWM Designs is our engineered record, so we invited their representative to the meeting, and there were a couple of things that stood out. One was the fact that if 21 was ever expanded, this is in the right-of-way and that trail would have to be removed. So the first thing that you say is, was, "Well, what's the likelihood of State Highway 21 being expanded?" And they talked about how in a five-year period of time, projects can go from not being on anybody's radar to they got funding for whatever reason. So that's a legitimate concern that falls into the conversation of a policy decision. So that was the first big question that is not ours to answer. And then the second is, is something that I think that a lot of people have always asked the question about, but they came back one more time and said to us, "Tech dot appreciates the concept of walkability, but our sole responsibility is to move traffic." And so when you get to the intersection of 2195 and Loop 150, we can all agree that there is a serious amount of traffic that goes through that intersection. And the last year, we've had several tractor-trailers to overturn because they've come off the hill and they've flipped over. And so I think one of the questions we need to give serious consideration to is the pedestrian safety of that intersection, because I think we all agree that when things get built, the assumption of the person using it is that they were staying safe by doing so. So Tech dot has raised that question with us a second time.
That's correct.
So we immediately put this project on hold operationally pending a discussion with y'all, because we need some feedback. So the first conversation, in whatever order you want to do, is if the trail gets built, it's going to be in the right-of-way, and are we willing to take the risk that if that highway is expanded and we have to move the trail, are we willing to do so with our sole experience? And then the second thing is, is that I think we can all agree that there are some concerns of traffic mobility through the intersection. Are we interested in making any improvements, given the laundry list of other things that we have to take care of? And if not, how do y'all want to proceed with this project? So all of that to say is, we need to do a check. Are we prepared to move forward, or do we need to stop and ask the question, is this a good project?
So one of the very first questions I have is, if Camp O's doing the grant, is Camp O okay with this project, or have we now not met the requirements of the grant?
No, we, if you build the trail the way it's designed, you meet the intent of the trail, but I don't.
That's right.
But they'll build it once.
Oh, yeah.
That's correct.
And they're not going to be around to relocate it.
No, if it gets relocated, it will be on our dime, and if you take it up and don't relocate it, I think they'll want the money back.
And you run the risk of reimbursing them if you tear it out in the next 10 years.
Okay. And then, of course, there's the, the intersection hasn't really changed. This seems like we're $156,000 too late to have the conversation.
Um, no, ma'am, you hadn't built it. You're going to spend real money if you built it.
No, but you know what I'm saying, like the traffic through that intersection hasn't changed substantially in the amount of time that we've spent the money. So if I'm a citizen, I would be like, y'all are talking about it being a busy intersection. It was a busy intersection when you decided to spend $156,000. So did we ever have a safe way to get over 95, and conditions have changed, or?
So what they, when this was done, there were some environmental studies done, some basic alignment and some engineering, very light engineering and survey work that was done to submit for the grant. That was about half of the cost that you've spent to date, to submit for the Camp O grant. Once you received the grant for the engineering, we've spent about an additional $55,000, $20,000 of which we handed to Tech dot as an upfront cost, which would be, we'll come back to, so we've got a total of about $35,000 in engineering, just to be clear.
Let me ask the mayor's question a different way, because it has predated me. The traffic hasn't changed, getting pedestrians from one side of 95 to the other has not changed. In your history, do you remember a community conversation about that concern, and if so, what was the answer?
There was a, there was a conversation about it previously, and what they wanted to do was evaluate it with engineering, which is what you did with the original $35,000 that we spent.
So that was part of the engineering money that was spent, was can we find a safe way to do it?
That is correct, and-
And did they come back with, "Yes, we could," or "No, we couldn't"?
Well, what we submitted to Tech dot was closing, our request with Tech dot was to actually, these free rights-
Yeah.
-was to change the note or turn, or just get rid of those altogether, and Tech dot said, "Absolutely not." So, because their business is to move traffic, right, not move people.
Yeah.
You had to ask.
Okay.
So what MWM Design did was ask. They weren't interested in that. They came back and did a traffic count in February, I think of this year, and that's when they brought the concern to us. So I'm assuming it's increased since 2015.
Okay, so I'm viewing this as vested intentions, hoping we could work something out, but there was never a really good solution proposed for safely getting people, pedestrians and bicycles from one side of 95 to the other side of 95.
That's absolutely correct. All you had was the line on the map that you see.
And then the other thing I hear you saying is that we made a down payment, that if we were to just say, "Camp O, thank you so much for the grant, but we're done," there's a portion of the money we would get back.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to understand the mechanics around. I have no idea whose light went on first. Does anybody know? All right, we're going to go ladies first. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I guess, and I know this predates everybody on the council, but I'm sorry, I'm a little disappointed that we went through that much process to figure out we can't cross 95. I mean, originally, when I heard about it as a citizen, I thought, "Well, I wonder if they're going to make a big bridge to go over that? How are they going to do that?" But I figured that was in the plan, but I'm sorry that no one thought of that earlier of $130,000. So I'm not looking forward to going and to spending any more money, because I personally won't even walk across 95 until soon.
All right, she turned her light on. Mayor Protim Nelson?
All three of the roads were talking about our state highways, so anything-
That's correct.
-anything that we want to do, whatever our desires are, secondary to what the state wants to do.
That's correct.
And they already told you that their primary purpose was to move traffic, and our walkability is not much concern to them.
Yes.
And I'd probably be throwing good money after bad if we continue, so I agree with Councilmember Rogers, that this is not something that I'm eager to spend any more of the city's money, period.
Councilmember Peterson, I see your light. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My biggest concern from the very outside of this project was going to be cost, I don't know whether a crosswalk over 95 was even in the initial suggestions of what the cost is going to be or not, but that's going to be a monumental job to put a crosswalk over 95, and I think it's just out of reach, and we don't want to put that kind of money out there when Tech dot decides to move some highways back and forth.
I would say, judging by the original overall budget amount, that was not considered.
Yeah. Councilmember Ennis?
Well, I had two questions, and one of them is probably moot, but I'll go and voice it. What is the width of the right-of-way up there?
Is that a question I don't know? I think it's 120 feet, but I would check with Tech dot, get back to you.
So we'd have to really get on the outside of that if we were going to protect ourselves.
To, into the, yes, into the topography, that's pretty deep.
And we shouldn't think that putting it on the edges would not require us to have to relocate it anyway, because they'll use every bit of that if they come through.
Right, right. Well-
Well, and it's not exactly, the roadway's not exactly centered in the right-of-way, yeah.
And it's interesting that in the two years or so that I've been on the council, every time this has come up, I've gotten more phone calls on this than anything about, "How are you going to get us across 95?" And so I agree with my fellow council members that this is something we probably ought to pass into the Netherlands.
Into the Netherlands. Councilmember Jackson?
Although I wasn't here when it happened, I've gotten several comments about it because of the Highway 95 with 150, Chestnut intersection, and having lived on that corner, having to cross that street as a pedestrian and everything else, and seeing people walk up there, it is a very dangerous intersection, and I, as much as I love the idea of the trail, I think that it would be a problem for us to continue to, with the project in that sense, because unless we would do the trail and have lights or pedestrian crossing at 95 and Chestnut and that area, and then let people walk across and then continue to the trail, but still, I just don't think that it's feasible at this point, although I, you know, as a parks person, love the idea of the trail, connectivity, especially connecting to the state park and everything, but now that this new insight has been achieved, or I think that is not something we should really look into, and, you know, I can remember that that was, before 71 was built, that was the main highway, and so we outgrew that and then went to 71, but still, I think we're going to probably see that develop some more later on also.
City Manager?
Councilmember Jackson brings up a very good point, and I think we had the conversation with Tech dot about signal lights for pedestrian crossing.
We did.
And I believe the answer is, we can't do that, because there is a timing sequence that happens at 71 that interacts with the timing sequence at 95 and 21, and they can't make the timing sequence work, so it wasn't even an option, because we raised that. So that, we got told no about as well, and when you said that, I thought, "No, no, we've had that conversation."
We did, that's correct.
And I think it was, no.
So this is a workshop, we won't be taking a vote, but what I'm hearing council say is, "We need to stop, we need to get any money back that we can," and I think it would behoove us to contact Camp O and let them know that they need to give this money to a different project, because we shouldn't be holding that grant money aside for us. Now, if we can think of another project and keep that money in the City of Bastrop, I think that would be awesome, but we may or may not have that choice. The other thing is, I am of the opinion that that will not stay an at-grade intersection. And just like Tech dot has worked with us on the ramps and for the trail to get across the Colorado River, and it may not be in the next two or three years, but at the time that they really redo that intersection, I fully expect, and they implied in their letter, that they would address mobility, and if you design it from the beginning and you're adding a pedestrian bridge when you're building all the other bridges, now-
Yes.
-you could start getting to something that could be potentially feasible. But I don't think Camp O would appreciate, nor do I think it's good stewards of us to hang on to that bond money and say, "Sometimes in the next 50 years, we think there might be some bridges at that intersection." So Trey and City Manager, did you get the feedback you needed?
Absolutely.
Council, does anybody have anything? Councilmember Jackson?
So you raised a good question also about other projects that we might be able to substitute, is that, do we?
I think that's wishful thinking.
Um, I would agree, because I think this is done on a point system. We will certainly ask the question. We have some other things that regionally, but I think what they'll do is put it back in their collective sum and make us rebid for it.
Yeah, this project has a time limit of, I think we have about another year-
Yeah.
-before, we'd have to go back anyway.
So we might as well just offer it back.
Yeah, it's either time to do something or not. We're at the crossroads.
No, I was just going, what I was going to say was, what I was going to ask was that, you know, if we would look into that, but if you think that the cost of the timeframe and everything-
I'm going to call on Mayor Protim Nelson, because he's our Camp O representative. He can give us some insight.
Well, the monies are project-specific, so we just get held on for ever.
That's correct, that's right. We have to give it back.
And this has to go through, the city manager pointed out, it goes through a point system. So it's going to have to be put back into the pot. Now, if we have something that we want to submit to the, to the tip or into the overall transportation thing, we can submit it, but it still has a life cycle on it. And they're going to look at the benefit, the cost benefit in there as Tech dot's going to utilize that also to make a determination of how best to spend the regional money. And that's what this money is, is regional.
That's correct.
So just, we need to give the money back and whatever money we can get, do so and move along our way.
And we can always reapply for something in a later day.
See.
Great. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, because I don't want y'all to get too comfortable, we're not going to go to two B. We are going to go to two F because Ms. Gleason can go home if we talk about easements. And I think that's a, a nice treat we should do for one of our staff members. I'm on item two F. Receive briefing on easement acquisition on Main Street rehabilitation project. Ms. Gleason?
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. I am excited to be here this evening to give you an update on our easements. Since we last saw each other, we have been rocking along, getting our easement signed, so I wanted to provide you guys with a quick update. So of the total fifty-two easements we need signed, we currently have forty-one of them signed. We started this project last time we met, we were at fifty-five point five six percent signed. As of today, we are at seventy-eight point eight four percent signed, which was a jump of over twenty percent. We still have eleven easements outstanding. I went ahead and broke down for y'all so you can get a little bit more idea of where those eleven easements sit. So of those eleven, six of them, or for a total of ninety point three eight percent, have expressed a will to sign. They're just working through the process of having their legal counsel review it and it needs to be signed by all sign, legal signatories and it also needs to be notarized. So it's just taking some time. And we've also had several easement owners who were lucky enough to be out of the country for most of the summer, so they're returning to Bastrop and getting those signed for us. We also have five of them that are still in discussion or nine point six two percent. And those have been all over the place, whether they're questions for the city attorney, we've been working closely with their office, questions about the survey, we've been working closely with the engineer, just trying to wrap up their questions and making sure that they're feeling safe and secure in their signatories. And as of date, we have not had anyone tell us no, which is very exciting and a very good sign. So we are overall super excited for the process we have made partnering with our downtown building owners. We will continue working closely with those six additional that should be shortly coming, along with working with the city attorney and city staff to get those remaining five who have questions that they want to bring to the forefront. If you guys have been talking to the downtown building owners, I think you'll find that the excitement downtown is palpable for this project. So we're excited to try to turn some of that excitement into actual action and get a project for them, so. Any questions?
And I don't know, Ms. Gleason, if this is for you or Mr. Joe, but I believe we said by end of October, we, we, we need to know whether we've got them or not so we can do a January second start.
We will have a item on the first meeting in October, which I believe is October eighth, because if we don't have them signed by that time, they begin to impact the schedule that you made abundantly clear you only followed.
Yeah.
So the goal is to kick this off January second. And in order to do that, we need to know we have them, get it bid, you will award the bid. I think we've got that calendar for the last meeting in November.
That is the first meeting.
You got to have a microphone, Mr. Joe.
It is not the first meeting in December. We have a calendar for the last meeting in November so that they can mobilize, get the contracts reviewed and signed and be ready to go January second.
That's correct. So we didn't know to proceed in December.
That's right.
Councilmember Rogers?
I just happen to have a question. I noticed, I know this was on last, last week's agenda, but the numbers were changed compared to what was on la, our last agenda until this one, even though it's the same item but postponed. What was the difference?
Um, so the numbers are changing every day. So as more and more easements come in, as people are shifting from having questions and being into discuss, in discussion to expressing a will to sign, so these numbers will continue changing up until, I suppose, our final update.
Okay, well, they're both dated July ninth, so I was just curious. So that's all right. I'm just wondering, just a curiosity question.
May? She, there was some math errors on the staff report of the.
The staff report did get rewritten. So, so there are two different staff reports, one for last week and then one for this week.
And it was just, it was just a math mistake. She had, there, it had, what it looked like to me was it was a copy and paste and part of it got corrected and part of it didn't.
Yeah.
That makes a better answer than you had more sign. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
First, kudos for the work you've done on this.
Absolutely.
Second question, is there, is there some reason for the hesitancy on some of these owners of signing the easement to us or is it just a timing factor?
I think both. I think the ones who have, a lot of them have expressed a will to sign. Like I said, we've had several owners who were out of the country for the summer. Some are just working through the logistics of getting all the owners in one place to sign in front of a notary. And then I think some people have come back to us with some really great questions, whether it's about the survey or it's about the long-term plans. So I think just working through those questions they have to make sure that they have all their answers before they sign. So I think it's a little bit of both.
Mayor, I'm sorry, councilmember Ennis?
I'm going to dovetail on Mayor Pro Tim's comments and compliment you on the hard work. I know it's been grueling at times, but thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. Honestly, it's a testament of the building owners and the business owners and there truly is an excitement downtown that I think all of us are aware of. And so I think this project's been a long time coming and I think everyone is really excited for it and what it means for downtown Bastrop.
Yay. Great. Good job. Thank you very much. And I heard from someone that you can go home now, so yay. Okay, now, sorry, Ms. Waldron, you don't get to go home. Your name's on almost all of the remaining, so it won't really matter what order we go in. So let's go back to two B and then we're just going to work through these in order. Receive update on the boards and commissions ordinance. And I didn't know if Ms. Waldron's doing that or who's presenting, okay, because she's just sitting there, so I was like, well, maybe it's not her.
So I would like to clarify that I am the communication instrument in all of this.
Is this your don't shoot the messenger? Is that what you're saying?
That's right. Um, no, I just wanted to walk through kind of, this is kind of a long, a long-term project that has had many hands on it, but I have put a sheet in front of you that I neglected to put in the packet that I felt like it was very important. This discussion goes back to September of twenty seventeen and we went, I say we, Mary Deary, my lovely finance specialist, worked very hard on, on this ordinance along with several attorneys at the Borquist Law Firm. So we went back and watched the video and took notes as to what was discussed, what recommendations were made, and, and that's what we used to draft this ordinance. So if I could go through my PowerPoint first, because I know you have a lot of red marks and notes and stuff, and then we can, can go over that, but at least I'll go through my PowerPoint and explain what we've put in here and then go from there.
Before you get started, Ms. Waldron, we should acknowledge that we have two council members in twenty nineteen that were not apart and not sitting on council in September of twenty seventeen. So there was nothing voted on at that time. It was a discussion. We, we're going to have another discussion today and then we'll move forward with voting on something when we get the ordinance.
Right, so these were purely just the recommendations that were brought about at that meeting. The recommendations were made and the consolidation ordinances were requested.
And just to help them appreciate why it's taken two years, it's, it's a lot of work.
Yes.
There, there.
We had to cross-reference a lot of stuff.
And, and just for purposes of, of helping with the consolidation for the two members, and I'm glad you said that because there's some background on this that's probably not in our PowerPoint. Each board was set up with bylaws as if it was a standalone kind of corporation, which is not typical for the way city boards operate. There is one she will address that has to have that by national designation and those bylaws really should have been codified in an ordinance, which is how you would do that. So that will help kind of the journey of why it's taken a lot of time to get back here.
This, this sheet will also show kind of where they were and where we've recommended them and so you can see how each board was kind of unique in its own setup and so.
So it's going to be painful, but we should really only have to do this once and then it'll be a much easier to update it after that.
I should hope so. I know Mary might not come back to work tomorrow. She watches this video and we're going to do it a couple more times. Article one point oh two point oh oh two is an administrative article under the general section of our code ordinances. And so this is where we have tried to put the general information that, that the boards that can will point back to this ordinance and be all on the same page. So the, some of the things that were changed in this particular section was just certain requirements on attendance records, when those are due, how those are handled. Also, city will provide notice of openings in July. We've changed our schedule of how we appoint, so these ordinances are now addressing the appointment schedules that we are working under currently. Appointments will be made in September of each year with effective date of October first. The article one point oh four point oh oh two is where the membership terms and filling a vacancy information resides as a general rule. So the general rule is can only serve two consecutive terms, must abstain from that board for at least one full term, doesn't mean they can't be, be appointed to a different board, but not on that particular board that they just came off of. There would be seven members unless controlled by federal state law or unless noted an exception in their particular, particular ordinance. Three-year terms staggering a membership by place will begin after first meeting in October, what that was previously July. Board members shall reside within the city limits or the city's ETJ unless otherwise noted. The boards that are controlled by this chapter one that I just went over are the ones listed, Arts and Public Places, Construction Standards Board, the Cemetery Board, Library, Main Street Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Tree Advisory Board. The boards that have exceptions are the boards listed here, the Ethics Commission, number, no change in membership there, number of members there. The Housing Authority is controlled by local government code. Zoning Board of Adjustments is also controlled by the local government code. Economic Development Corporation, you know, is a separate entity and is also governed by a separate law. Hunters Crossing Local Government Code, City Approved Articles incorporation is also controlled by the local government code. Planning and Zoning Commission, Youth Advisory Council. This one was in there because it's so new and they worked so hard and we felt like going in and changing them, plus their number of members does matter because they, they need enough members so that they can meet quorum when they meet. Historical Landmark Commission, city residents only, not open to ETJ. And the Main Street will have separate bylaws and that is controlled by a law, which I will go over later, actually, since we're not doing the ordinance. They have a separate section in their ordinance that will explain why they have to keep their bylaws. And that's all I had in a PowerPoint.
Okay, I think a logical way to do this is to go back to the beginning of your PowerPoint and we'll talk about each one of the items. And then there's some, some notes that I've taken on the ordinance that I want council's input because it will be, we'll be closer to having something we can vote on the more information that, that we can give them. So the attendance records and, and turning them over to the mayor, I want to talk about this super quick for an item and that if you guys are following along with the ordinance, I'm on page five of twenty-five of the ordinance and I think six and seven are redundant and we don't need them. What used to happen was they would look at the.
Mayor, I don't have a copy of the ordinance.
It was in the September tenth packet for the last week's.
I mean, it's actually in this packet too. It's just in the ordinance section.
We pulled three A, but it's in, it's the backup for three A.
Thank you.
Um, in the past, they only looked at attendance once a year. And if somebody's missed three in a row or, and they haven't resigned and they're not able to make a quorum, we, I, I didn't think it was appropriate to only look at absences once a year. If somebody's missing, we need to pull them off the board and replace them so the board can make their quorums and continue to have their meetings. So that's why this, the administration of absences, in my opinion, is something that needs to be done on an ongoing basis and not something that's looked at once a year. Does, does anybody object to that? Does that make sense?
Was it just in the ordinance or in the book that it was supposed to be looked at once a year, but I, I seem to remember it being checked more often than that, but maybe it just.
They kept track of them, but they only looked at them once a year. So once a year, the, the mayor would say, oh, this person's missed three in a row, this person's missed, hasn't made their two-thirds or whatever.
Councilmember Jackson, there was a requirement last year that the city manager provide attendance schedules in April of every year. And so that's when it became public and that's what you're remembering. And what the mayor is saying is that when I got here.
April, every year's not, is not an appropriate way to handle.
What I, what I'm remembering is when there were sometimes situations, the different liaisons, the different boards would alert us that that was happening. So although it was suggested that it only happened once a year, it happened more than once a year.
But if, if you'll look at the two F backup in the ordinance, it's, and that's what we're talking about is going through these procedure processes. So I'm saying we need to take out the April reference.
Oh, I was going to add this one. I was, sorry. I just wanted to note that the fact that it was reviewed more than just once a year, although it may have implied that in the reading, but it.
Yeah, I, the best that we could find, there weren't even really good records of attendance. Is that correct, Madam Secretary? That's been part of the issue. So it, and honestly, we're talking about moving forward. So moving forward and I'm going out of the order of the slideshow, but I think we should add a council liaison and a definition of the council liaison because we referenced the city's liaison in here and I think city's liaison should be replaced with staff liaison because we have staff liaisons and we have council liaisons. And we ought to be clear about who does what and what their role is and the ordinance doesn't cover that. So that was kind of one of my overall things. But for the attorneys, hearing this conversation, I think you will find some of the subparagrafts on page five can probably be just completely removed. So I would encourage you guys to take a look at that. So is there anything else on attendance that, that anybody had any notes or issues? Councilmember Rogers?
So we're leaving the number of absences and stuff, it's just the reporting of them so it can be more tracked and we can keep track of people that need to be replaced.
Yes, okay.
And we'll make sure we're still keeping track. If we don't show up, we're going to replace you.
And honestly, where this is going is I'm holding the city manager accountable, the city manager is holding her staff liaisons accountable that they're reporting things in a timely manner. That's, that's what we're, that is, that was my goal, but this ordinance reflect.
And we just, we just added the language that once the city secretary would notify the mayor, once they realize that this member is out of compliance with the, with the policy of the attendance.
And then the next one's like upon receipt, but you get lost in upon receipt of what.
Yeah, we can read through those.
And so I just, I think we can make it easier and I'm for less words and more straightforward than, than keeping too much of that. Okay, anything, everybody okay on attendance? All right, let's go to your next slide. Okay, we don't provide openings and I think that this ordinance should reference the fact that we have a volunteer fair. I talked with the city secretary about that earlier and really the vacancies is not what we're trying to fill. People's terms are up, they may or may not be reapplying. And I think this ordinance should reflect the process that we have, which is in July, we're going to have a volunteer fair. In August, we're going to accept applications and council's going to interview the people who have applied. And in September, the mayor is going to appoint and council will have an opportunity to confirm and they will be effective on October first. Because if you read in the existing ordinance, this posting the vacancies implies that if somebody is removed because of attendance or if they resign, that you're not going to do anything about it until the next August. And that, that's not what we do. We're trying to always keep the boards full. Councilmember Rogers?
And I'm sorry, because I don't, I'm still trying to load that thing up. Um, I just wanted, you had said we opened applications in July, is that correct? Or we start accepting them? But we, we, we will accept them prior to the year.
We accept them all the time.
Yeah, that's what I was just making sure that wording lets people know that they can come in and fill out that application anytime.
This, the current ordinance says that the city will provide notice of openings in July and it used to be April and we moved it to July because we're moving the term effective date to October first. And I'm saying that just needs to be removed.
So, so C one says at the direction of the mayor, the city secretary will post notices at city hall as vacancies in established places or near places become available for appointments to city advisory boards. Are we not going to notify when there's vacancies? We're going to leave them.
Have we done that in the last years that you're aware of, city secretary? Have we done that in the last years that you're aware of, City Secretary?
We have been posting on the board vacancies.
On the, online or on the outside board?
No, on the outside board. We post, we have in the past, we've posted them on the boards.
So, we need to, if we're going to continue doing that, then we're not doing them in July, we're doing them as they, as they become vacant.
That's correct. In the past, as they became vacant, it would be posted out on the board.
I just don't think that's what the ordinance says, so we ought to match the ordinance with what we're really doing.
Well, it kind of repeats itself because in the first one, it says, "At your direction, those will be posted." So, maybe we can just-
I think we're having two conversations, so let's see if we can dissect this because I think we're trying to fix a couple of problems. And it's my understanding that in June, you publish notice in the newspaper talking about the, the board process, is that correct? And that's kind of the public notification?
Right.
Okay. And so, in the past, I think the openings was the point. And so, we've got to find a new word because we, we have a, a formal recruitment process that can't replace the openings because you do have periodic openings, but you have a recruitment process that's formal.
Well, and what you're posting in June, do you post all the vacancies or you just say, "It's recruitment time and here's all the boards and come to the fair," correct?
Right. In the past, it would just say that, the publication in the paper would say that it is like recruitment time and these are the vacancies at this time.
Okay. Just clean it up. Let's just make it, we, this is now going to be our third year, let's make it match what we're actually doing. Mayor Protim Nelson?
It's pretty easy. Our new process kind of makes C1 useless. So, C1 should be removed because it's, there's a redundant process in C2 that is reflective of our new process.
So, when openings come open during the year, Mayor, you're using applications you received during our recruitment process. So, really, it's irrelevant, okay, I got you. That makes sense.
Page eight of 25. Oh, yeah. And look, I wrote, "We don't do this, remove, remove, remove." So, yeah. But you're, there's a recruitment, there's an active recruitment process that's not covered in the ordinance that we need to talk about. And then, we need to know that during the year, not during the recruitment time, if there's an opening, it'll be posted and we'll be reviewing applications. But to Councilmember Rogers' point, we, we take applications all the time because we never know when we're going to have an opening.
Okay.
But if, say if you had for a myriad of reasons, several vacancies and we needed to actively recruit outside of that position, of that time period, you need the authority to do that.
Yes. So, we can say that our intent is we do it, we plan to do it once a year in July and that we'll do it other times if the need arises. Kind, I understand what you're saying, don't box yourself into a corner. Yeah. And I think that we should include that council's going to interview the candidates and, you know, step, step through our process because we have that pretty well formalized. We should also, in our ordinance, include the volunteer appreciation banquet, that that's a part, that's a part of the boards and commissions. I just think the ordinance should reflect the process that we've been doing, going on three years now.
That's, if I may-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's been the problem because every time we turn over to council, there's been no continuing, I would say continuing way of doing things as far as attendance. I mean, it's been kind of loose and goosey.
Well, I guess what I'm talking about is this is the third year that we've had the volunteer fair, taken the applications, done the interviews.
I'm supporting what you're saying.
Okay.
Let's, let's get it in.
Yeah, so you're saying, "Let's put it in writing so that as new people come on, they know exactly what they're walking into."
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, Mayor Protim Nelson.
So, I'm talking about the volunteer fair, where would you, what would you suggest that it be included into this ordinance? I mean, it's-
I, I undersee, appointments to city boards shall be made pursuant to the following procedures. I think that procedure should talk about the recruitment phase and, and step through all of that.
That's going to be my suggestion.
Page eight, page eight of 25.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, my suggestion would be, is the recruitment would have two sections, are openings, one for recruitment process and one for an opening during the year. So, we need to be very clear that we have a very formalized recruitment process, that we fill 90% of them. But if there are situations where the mayor needs to fill mid-year, there needs to be a process for us to be able to actively activate openings and help her recruit.
I potentially like to activate, activate openings, yeah.
Well, C2 provides that, we just need to clean the language up because it says informed by other appropriate means and that would be the job there.
Yeah. We just, it shouldn't be find the needle in the haystack. Let's use some clear language in the residents, what they've been getting in their flyers and inserts and what they read in the ordinance, everything matches up. Okay, appointments made in September with an effective date of October 1st, that's to align it with the fiscal year so that everybody's on the same page. I think we've all, that's what we've done for three years. Is anybody opposed to an October 1st effective date? Okay.
And that will be under the recruitment section.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that'll work. Okay, I'm going to talk about this one first. Can only serve two consecutive terms. The things that you know two months in that you revise your thinking about two and a half years later. Two, two months in, it was, there's 8,000 people in town. If you have somebody on a board for 25 years, that's, that's a position that there might be somebody else that would like to serve and honestly, some of the politics of taking someone off of a board that's been on there for 25 years and letting a new person serve is taken care of if you do term limits. That, that's one of the ways, is you're not going to be on here 25 years. The downside is, it turns out of our 8,000 citizens, there's not 800 of them that are willing to serve on boards. And just because somebody's willing to serve on one board, doesn't mean that they're willing to serve on other boards. Some people have a variety of interests, some people are really only willing to serve on one particular board. If somebody is doing a good job, not having attendance problems, working hard on the board and helping it move along, I, I am willing to say that I, I would like to just take this one off and not have term limits on the boards, knowing that for a mayor, you can find yourself in a position where you have to say, "Okay, Connie Schrader, you've been on there 18 years and somebody else deserves a chance. We've had seven applicants and we're replacing you." And, and me as mayor now and any future mayor has the ability to do that. So, is anybody adamant that we have term limits on boards? Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was going to support you on that. That's what I was feeling very strongly and since I wasn't here when this was discussed before, I mean, I, that was going to be one of my discussion points.
Okay. Mayor Protim Nelson?
I think it should comport with what the requirements are for the city council, only serve two, three-year terms. However, I think we should put a caveat in there that, that allows somebody, or allow the mayor to bring back to council special exceptions.
So, that would be your proposal?
That would be my thought, yes.
Okay. Let's have other thoughts. Councilmember Ennis?
I agree wholeheartedly with you, Mayor. There are certain rights and privileges that are given to the mayor's office and appointing boards, members to boards is your purview with our concurrence. If you think somebody has served on a board long enough, you can take them off. I think limiting ourselves, or limiting you, is, makes it difficult, even more difficult for us to get people on boards. We work real hard to, to advertise, get people to the fair, to get them to serve on boards, to make them attractive. And our, our volunteer banquet is all about honoring people who serve on, on these boards and commissions and I, I think it's a mistake to, to limit the attendance. I think that's your purview.
Councilmember Ennis, thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I kind of agree with, with Lyle here, Mr. Protim. Yeah. Because it, it's really hard to ask somebody to step down when there isn't a reason and sometimes that's just a hard, not every, not everybody's going to be as strong as you, Mayor. So, giving them something they can step back on and say, "Okay, it's time to have somebody else." But again, there's got to be some special exceptions if there isn't anybody applying for it. But if you have some, seven more people in line, giving a new blood to something might not be a bad idea. So, I don't know how to fix it.
Councilmember Peterson, I am sure wishing your light would turn on.
And there it is. Mayor, I, I kind of agree with the, the terms along with city council because I can see put some language in there that the mayor can always reappoint, if there's nobody waiting in the wings to take that position, the mayor can always reappoint that person to the board or commission again.
Well, honestly, I'm liking that idea that if there are no other candidates, that the mayor reserves the right to extend the term limits because back two years ago, when I originally talked about this, we had hoped that with the volunteer fair, we would have three times as many applicants as we had board positions. And if we find ourselves in that position, it would really be nice to be able, if people are wanting to serve because they don't have to be on the board. You can be on committees and, and on other things to get people in, engaged. So, I, I do think if, if we're going to put it in the ordinance as term limits, it needs to have a, if there are no other applicants, that, that somebody can stay on. Both, when y'all got done talking, both of their lights went on. Councilmember Ennis?
I want to remind us that we're making, we're, we're talking about in, in putting this term, term limits in, but we're also talking about how to get around it.
And I, I understand. Either do it or don't do it, right?
Do it or don't do it.
Councilmember Jackson?
Well, being a person that's, from the very beginning when we started doing term limits, even with council, I was of course opposed to that. But, because I think experience is very important and hopefully I'm a testament to that. But, as far as term limits for boards and things, I, I just don't like the idea of limiting the, the term limits. I think that the experience and the history that some of the people have on the boards is important and if they have basically lost their, I guess willingness to serve and their effectiveness, the mayor and the council have the opportunity not to appoint them, but to limit them because of a rule about term limits, I think is just not fair.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. One thing that I will share with council is that I've also gotten feedback from more than one citizen that they would fill out an appointment, but there's not term limits and the same people keep getting reappointed. So, why, why even bother filling out the application? So, the very fact of not having term limits may be the reason that we're not having more people apply. Councilmember Ennis?
That's the onus on you.
The onus is on me, how?
If, if they feel that somebody's serving on the board too long, then they need to talk to the mayor about that and the mayor needs to make a change.
Councilmember Rogers, you want to say that out loud? I really wish you would.
I kind of think that's what we're trying to do right now, is giving her the opportunity and the tools to make those decisions.
So that each one of them doesn't have to be a political nightmare.
Right, we're trying to, we're trying to make the guidelines for the mayor to, we're trying to build the road for the mayor to stay in. And even though you're the mayor, you still have rules and these are your rules, correct? Yeah?
She already has those.
Oh, well.
Charter gives us, gives her those rights.
No, Councilmember Ennis, I believe what Councilmember Rogers is saying is if there's nothing to fall back on, it becomes nothing. Now, it's political. So, the mayor's mad at me, that's why you're replacing me on the board. As opposed to, "So glad that you have served for six years, there are nine other people who would like to serve on the board and I'm going to give one of them an opportunity."
If we're scared of politics, we shouldn't have gotten into this battle, into this job.
I, I understand.
That's why I didn't run for mayor.
Okay, so, um, yes, Mayor Protim Nelson?
I want to add into this discussion. You spend a great deal of time and attention on appointing board members. I, I'm going to find it difficult that future mayors will spend the time and attention and they may just fall back on the easy task. We set a rule and that we provide exceptions to the rule to meet the needs of the city. I think that that provides us with some cover. The politics be damned. I mean, I think it's a, it's a deal where we want to make this as inclusive as possible for all of our citizens and not just have a board self-perpetuate itself.
So, I appreciate the discussion, I very much do. I would say that when we put this in the ordinance, it needs to be known that it's going to be voted on and we ought to make it easy to take it out or easy to amend it because we are talking about no term limits at all, two term limits, or two term limits with an option for the mayor to override that. I, I don't think it's important to say that somebody has to wait three years before they can apply again. So, I would, and if we're going to match city council, you have to be off of city council one year. You don't have to be off city council three years. So, we should make it match what we do with council. City Manager?
I, I'm not sure of the direction you just gave. Did you, do you want three different answers available to plug and play when y'all vote?
No, let me help with that.
Or you want me to count heads tonight?
Nope, I don't want you to count heads tonight. I want the ordinance to say, "Two term limits with an option for the mayor to override it." Want that what the ordinance to say? And then, when this council votes, they can slash, the mayor doesn't have an option, or they can pull out the whole thing.
So, is it a mayor-
So, we're going to put in the deluxe model and then you guys will get a chance to vote on what you want.
So, what I heard was that it would, Mayor to reappoint if no other applicants. Do we not want that? Just the mayor, okay.
Can I be the devil in the detail?
Please.
So, I think what I heard you say is, is that the fact that these folks can be reappointed is the reason that I'm not going to file an application.
I've had people tell me that.
So, if you have an option to override, I think the consensus is, is that's a legitimate workaround. So, we're either going to have term limits or we shouldn't have term limits.
I believe that's where Councilmember Rogers was.
What if she only had, or the mayor only has an option to override one term limit? So, you're giving them two and the, the mayor has an option for one more limit, but after three, you are dead in water.
Let, let's not use the word dead.
Okay.
I heard a "mm" over there.
And your point is one for a full term should just be one year?
Yes. And, and that matches council. You, because if you have, once you do your two terms on council, you're not off council for three years, you're off for one year and then you can apply for another seat. Is that, is everybody okay with that, with it just being one year? And I know you guys are because you want there to be no term limits whatsoever, so that wouldn't even be applicable. So, okay. Okay. And, city attorney, is that making sense to you? Okay. All right, that was fun. Three-year terms, staggering, first meeting in October, seven members unless controlled by federal law, that's when this chart that you passed out to us kicks in.
Mayor and council, I believe, is, is the nine in the charter for planning and zoning?
Yes.
I think the nine is stipulated by the charter.
And that was going to be, that was another one of my comments, that we say, "These are our rules unless it's overridden by state or federal law." And I think the charter is local law, so I think we need to either say charter or local law. But the charter specifically says nine P and Z.
And we didn't make changes, we left them at nine, yeah. I, okay, I actually looked in the charter, but I'll look again. I could not find it.
Say that, I didn't hear you.
I remember someone saying the charter on planning and zoning, I didn't find it when I looked, but I'll look again.
Yeah, it's definitely in there.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, we have seven, unless we have five, unless we have nine, that's what this chart's about.
We have seven unless, yes, unless it's overridden by something else that drives that.
So, let's just run down them really, really quick. The, well, and right off the bat, if we go, and I'm looking at the piece of paper she put at our de, at the dais, Bassdrop Arts and Public Places, it says five to nine, but that's likely to be replaced by the Cultural Arts Master Plan when, however that gets resolved. So, I think I'm kind of okay with leaving that and that was actually one of my questions. Do we need to mention the Cultural Arts Master Plan or will come back to this at the time that council adopts and decides what they're going to do? We'll come back. The Construction Standards is five, Ethics is five, Fairview Cemetery is- The construction standards is five, ethics is five, Fairview Cemetery is six? Are we sure about that?
I didn't actually make this chart, but she pulled it from all of the ordinances, so.
I thought it was seven, let's double check that number. Historic Landmark Commission, is it seven? The Library Board is now seven? Oh, that was the old one, here we go. So seven, seven, the Parks Board is seven, Housing Authority is five, Zoning Board of Adjustments is five, the EDC is seven, the Hunter's Crossing, how many on your board?
Seven.
Seven. And Planning and Zoning is nine, and it's in the charter, and the Youth Advisory was 12, and we were going to leave that 12 because they just formed. Okay. So the federal or state law, again, we need to make sure that we follow the charter as well. Yes, we should stagger terms, and terms are all three years unless, like, I know EDC is, it's mandated that it's two years, the Housing Authority's mandated two years, so we'll follow state and federal law and local law, whatever on that. Residency, board members, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson?
I think, was your light on for me?
Just go ahead, I called you, go.
Okay.
I was on first.
Yours was on first, I was just trying to go with that.
Okay.
Now, since you stopped me, I can't remember what I was about to say.
Okay, well, turn your light off, Councilmember Ennis, and maybe he'll help you remember.
HLC is misnoted on here, it should be city only.
Because that's in the ordinance? And?
Well, I think that is a question.
What?
I think that was a question.
It's not a question, it's city only.
No, I think what she's saying is, we're talking about everything, so that's one of the things that we can talk about. You're saying it's city only, in your opinion, as you want it to stay city only.
So you're going to change the HLC ordinance?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about doing, on all of these.
Yeah, these are all the board ordinances.
Well, in your, in other areas, you refer to the HLC ordinance, and there is no change in your other information.
So in the actual ordinance, we were pointing it to, I think we left it. I think.
I think it makes sense that HLC has to be city only.
Yeah, I think we left it.
Yeah.
Tracy, just as an FYI, Section 12.01 of the City Charter, Planning and Zoning Commission states that there shall be established a Planning and Zoning Commission, which shall consist of nine residents serving staggered three-year terms.
Yep.
Okay, 12.05?
12.01.
Oh, okay.
So, do you have a next chart that has the residency? Yeah, go to your next one, and I think it'll answer Councilmember Ennis's question. The HLC is not listed on there, so to your point, it would revert to the HLC ordinance, and the HLC ordinance would be just inside city.
Define this, right.
Perfect. Councilmember Jackson?
I remembered what I was thinking. What, it was seven a magic number or something? Since I wasn't here and didn't know, what was the reason?
We were having several boards that couldn't make quorums with nine.
And so seven was the magic number to replace the nine with?
Yes, because you've got to be at an odd so that you can vote on things, and it was an easier, and it was better, the general consensus was five was too few, nine, they were having a hard time making a quorum, so we got to seven. Councilmember Ennis?
No.
Okay, so, these boards are the ones that would be city limits or ETJ, because that's what this overarching ordinance is saying, correct?
And seven members.
And the Youth Advisory isn't on there because it's within BISD, which is funky in its own geographic limits.
Yeah, so this one lists exceptions, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, we skipped, can we go back to the slide before with the residency? I mean, I had a question about residency.
Sure.
No, that's the one, that's the right one. It says that board members shall reside within the city limits or the city's ETJ unless otherwise noted.
Yes.
My question on that, or my thought pattern on that, was the fact that, okay, it is a city board, and I know we do have some ETJ members there, I just want to make sure that at no point in time that we have the majority of the members of a certain board from the ETJ and not from the city itself. That is a concern, and I don't know if there's any way of addressing that, but that's a concern of mine because it is a city board, and if we open it up to city's ETJ, that could be a problem at one time or another, and I just wanted to address that.
Okay, that's fine. That can be, obviously, the mayor confirm, or mayor appoints and the council confirms, but what a suggestion, if seven's kind of our magic number, what if we said no more than two people could be in the ETJ, as a way of making sure that the majority is always inside the city limits? Would that address your concern?
Right, and it, I mean, the reason I thought about that was because of our new rule that's coming in with the residency for library fees and things like that, and then if we had board members that were from the ETJ, and then they'd be paying fees, it just was concerning.
So, council, what do you think about if we just say that no more than two? Because it can be zero, right? It's whoever you appoint, we're just opening up the flexibility. Does anybody have a problem with saying no more than two? Mayor Protim Nelson?
I think the term no more than two, and as you pointed out, it could be zero, because we got voted in by citizens of the city of Bastrop, and so I like to have input from them, but I certainly want to limit it to two or less.
Okay. Council, is everybody okay if we add that to the ordinance? All right, so that's something we'll be looking for, City Attorney. Okay, so then the next slide shows, these are the boards that basically, next slide.
I'm sorry.
I was like, she balked, I was willing it to change.
I'm still making my notes.
No, go back one. These are the boards, for lack of a better term, that are somewhat standard in that they are, well, that they're going to be, for most practical purposes, seven, no more than two in the ETJ, city residents and ETJ, and three-year terms, all the standard-ish sort of stuff. Bastrop Art and Public Places, their current bylaws, if there is a need for a certain skill, if there's some artistic need or whatever, and the person doesn't live with, they want to have, their current ordinance has an exception for that residency. I would think that the Cultural Arts Master Plan will address that very thing when it comes back to us, so I'm, I don't want Bastrop Art and Public Places to think that we're ignoring the fact that there would be special skills and that that could be an exception, but I'm wanting us to acknowledge that we'll be addressing that with the Cultural Arts Master Plan. Councilmember Ennis, you're the liaison of the BAIPP, is that agreeable to you?
Yes, ma'am, which, this is a little bit out of sync here, but I wanted to address that. We've listed a lot of job duties for BAIPP in this new ordinance, and I'm a little bit concerned that we don't, at this point, are we confining ourselves with the new master arts plan to certain, to BAIPP's role when we're not sure what BAIPP's role is going to be? You don't think so, Madam City Manager?
I think, Tracy, we just took the bylaws that exist of BAIPP and put it in this ordinance, and so it'll just stay there until you answer that question, and then we'll take this out and replace it with cultural arts and whatever their role is.
Okay, great.
I don't think that's exactly what happened.
We didn't put the full bylaws, we put the bylaws, the pieces of the bylaws that we felt actually needed to be codified. We didn't put their entire copy in here. We went over that with the attorneys and with.
Well, there's some things in the bylaws that reference their action with me that all not.
And those are in here, yes.
So all of that's in here.
So anything council would have to approve on there, those things we left in, but as far as procedural-type things that we didn't feel like actually needed to be in the ordinance, we took those out.
So the 2D, 3D art, the process on how all of that is, stated in the bylaws.
Yes.
So my suggestion, Councilmember, would be is, once BAIPP works through what they'd like to see, then we fix it at that time to mirror whatever it needs to be.
I just brought it up so we'd address it.
We did leave in the ordinance, the sole discretion, a member of the board may reside outside of the corporate limits, the extra, as long as the appointed individual provides exceptional experience, we left that in there.
Right.
In the, okay, just one more.
And, City Attorney, there's any way to write some sort of a generic, this is an ordinance that we intend to vote on now, and that the city of Bastrop is committed to the arts and has invested in the Cultural Arts Master Plan, and expects to replay, to make major, you know, make amendments to BAIPP in a timely manner, to Councilmember Ennis's point, to just acknowledge, we spent a lot of time and money, and people put a lot of hours into it, so some sort of a generic, and that can be a tickler reminder to, that we definitely come back and update for the Cultural Arts Master Plan. If that's possible, Alan may go, give me the, you're making it harder and don't do that, and I can get overridden, but.
Brad, I don't usually use the mic. Do you want that in the actual ordinance, or in like a whereas clause at the beginning, or?
In the whereas.
Whereas, that would just kind of reflect what your intentions are in the future. Okay, we can do that.
Councilmember Ennis, is that agreeable to you?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. All right, you're doing great, Tracy. Okay. And that, is that your last one? That's your last one?
Yes.
Okay, so, the overall things that I had was the role of the council liaison, the overall thing I mentioned was replacing city liaison with staff liaison, so that we know that there's two different roles. I also think that we should put in the ordinance that they are following the council's rules and procedures for their meetings, because the rules and procedures say that they apply to boards and commissions, so the boards and commission ordinance should acknowledge that they are to follow the council's rules and procedures, in my opinion. Is anybody dramatically opposed to that? Let's see, October, May, September, I only got through about two-thirds of it. And then, there has been, and Councilmember Ennis, you may want to speak to this because you have, I know you have talked to me about it on one board, and I've had chairman of other boards, as a part of the ordinance and a part of the responsibilities, it would be nice to say that the staff liaison works with the chair to prepare the agenda. Councilmember Ennis, am I stating that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, I think it needs to be a little bit stronger from the standpoint that you need to have the chairs, prepares the agenda with the, prepares the agenda with the chair's involvement and approval, or something like that. I don't know what happens if the chair doesn't approve, so we don't want to put our staff in the position of awkward position there, but I do think it needs to be managed together.
City Manager?
There are a couple of boards that, in theory, that sounds great, but we have legal requirements to post the intent, and we have legal requirements by state law to handle certain things, so they're not negotiable. The Zoning Board of Adjustment's a great example of, that agenda is what it is, they have a very specified, very clear role to play. Some of planning and zoning's agenda could be discussed between the director and the chairman, but a lot is dictated by what comes in, mandated that once we get it in the door, we got a timeframe to get it kicked, through the process, or it's deemed approved, and so I'm concerned about shalls versus we'd like to, because in some instances, it really doesn't matter what any of us think, the city attorney's going to tell us, you must post that, and that's what it must say. So, no good deed goes unpunished.
Is there an opportunity to say that the staff liaison, and I know it may be a director, but a staff liaison will prepare the agenda, and that the chair will have an opportunity to review and comment prior to it being posted?
I think that works. Before it's posted.
Review and comment before it's posted. Like, they can't have 25 years, but they also shouldn't be given 10 seconds, so, you know, they, because sometimes the chair can say like, ooh, but don't forget, we need to talk about so-and-so, or whatever. Councilmember Rogers?
I was just wanting to comment that I agree with Bill Ennis, that they need a chance to at least see what they're about to do, what the meeting's about, because we asked for these people to volunteer, so we actually still need to make them feel empowered, they're still a chair of that meeting, so it's kind of like, if they don't get to see anything prior to the meeting, you're just kind of leading them around, so what's the purpose?
Okay.
And to that point, sometimes the chair has recommendations for something that should be put on the agenda that maybe staff has, either hasn't heard of, or forgotten, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I agree. Yeah, so, we don't want to box anybody into a corner, but we want, the ordinance can help encourage cooperation.
I want the board and county offices to.
Yeah. Council, I want to make you aware that we have a citizen signed up to speak on this item, and that this person probably thinks I forgot them, but I really didn't, but I want to give you guys one last round of any comments or major things you want to change, and then I'll call this citizen for the comment. Mayor Protim Nelson, you had your light on.
Well, just along the last subject that we just talked about, I think the, given the opportunity, and also mentioned the temporal factor in there to ensure we comply with the state mandates is vitally important in there, to have the opportunity to comment, but put a timing factor on there, so it gets done in the appropriate manner.
The other item, because I just saw my piece of paper, on September 13th and 14th, and yes, that was Saturday, Friday and Saturday, the city manager, Alan, and I were exchanging some emails, he was in Laredo and heard a woman speak that was from the Attorney General's office, and it addressed whether or not citizen's comments is required on the agenda, and specifically as to whether or not it was required on a board and commission agenda. So, I believe that should also be addressed in this ordinance, and I'm willing to do what Alan says is in compliance with the law, and then you guys can visit about it, but there's no point in mandating that we have a citizen's comment if it's not required and not necessary, so are you guys okay with that? I'm just trying to keep us up to speed with the latest laws.
What is the requirement again?
He, the last rule that he said is that for boards and commissions, that citizens can sign up to speak on any item on the agenda for a board and commission, but that it is not necessary to have a citizen's comment as an agenda item on a board meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if, I just want to acknowledge that Alan's got information that we ought to be aware of, and then that may also, we may at some point go back and relook at our rules and procedures, because it's on our agenda segments about the citizen's comment, we just, we need to be consistent. But specifically on library board and parks board, if we don't need to have that on the agenda, people are going to come and comment about whatever, they have an opportunity to contact all the board members before they get there, they could talk to the chair, and since the chair will be working with the staff liaison, then they'll see it on the agenda, so, and I'm not saying it has to come off, I just want to acknowledge the fact that Alan has given us information about that. Okay, council energized to talk about anything else on this? Then I'm going to call the citizen, Debbie Moore, you wish to ask a question, make a comment, and give us wisdom, and we especially expect some wisdom. You got to get to the mic, and please state your name and address.
My name is Debbie Moore, 1306 Church Street in Bastrop, Texas, USA. And I speak as both a citizen and somebody that's had a little bit of experience chairing a committee, and I for one would always vote to have citizen comments on P and Z. Very, 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 very seldom does anybody ever sign up, but in this day and time of cynicism with elected officials, and lack of participation, and criticism when you don't know what you're talking about, if we can't give, I want to give everybody a chance to talk, because if you don't participate, don't talk to me, don't complain, just go away. So, I for one would do that. You've answered a lot of my questions already. I think it's a good idea to at least speak with the chair beforehand, because there's always, well, not always, but sometimes on thorny issues that P and Z has taken up, there might be some. there might be some information, some backstory, that staff could share with, with the chair, that would be helpful going in, we had it just recently, so I'd like the opportunity to be able to, to speak with staff liaison.
Were you okay with the verbiage we talked about, that the chair would have an opportunity to review and comment prior to it being posted?
Because there's, you know, I've been around longer than Matt has around here, and sometimes I know, let me, did you know about this, or did you know about that? So, and Matt's great to work with, so, that answers that question. And also, when you are posting your vacancies, it probably would be a good idea also to say how many seats on the board will be up for reappointment. Not that there's a vacancy or an opening, but you're going to be making appointments, like every year it's, it's three, and if we have any vacancies, though, it could be four. So, just say, it's not just necessarily an opening, but also the seats that are going to be reappointed. And you are, you're, you're going to, I was looking at, under the, at policy explanation on number six, it said, if, under attendance, if it gets to be a problem, I didn't look at the whole ordinance, but I think y'all have had enough conversation, you're going to stick with the rules that are in there towards vacancies. Okay, that's it, I'm happy, y'all done good, thank you.
And the wisdom is, no, I'm just teasing.
Keep on keeping on, and I'll see, I'll see you under the next item.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Moore, appreciate that. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, man, Mayor Protim Ennis, I just, I'm so afraid. Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to make one comment about the citizens' comments, and that is, this, this council has prided itself on its commitment to transparency, and I don't think we adhere to that commitment if we take citizens' comments out of our boards and commissions' agendas. So, I have to say.
It's a little bit of typing, and if nobody's there, nobody's there.
Nobody's there, there's nobody there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody in agreement with that? Okay. All righty, and as soon as it's not there, then there, I would have come, but it wasn't posted.
So, Mayor, I thought the suggestion was we put in the ordinance to follow the city attorney's recommendation, that it doesn't have to be there, but I think what we just heard, that they're not interested in that, so we're going to leave it to have boards and commissions follow the agenda process of council.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification, and I'm hearing yays and agreement up and down. Okay. Ms. Waldron, you got everything you need for 2B? City attorney, you got everything you need for 2B? Excellent. We are moving on to 2C. Receive a presentation and discuss incorporated changes to the Bastrop Building Block Code Updates Technical Manual and Pattern Book with Matt Lewis. We also have a citizen that wants to speak on this, but we'll hear our presentation first. Mr. Lewis?
Can you hand me the clicker so I can kick off the first two things? Thank you, sir. Mayor and council, I kind of wanted to, at this point in time, walk through the next steps, so that we have an understanding and kind of a reminder of where we are. I first want to acknowledge that we sent out some drafts that shouldn't have been sent out and created some background noise that I'm very sorry happened. We have figured out the SNAFU, we had some, some conversions issues and some, some software challenges that we uncovered on Friday and got a lot of that fixed, and some of the things that had been fixed, refixed, and so, I'm very excited today about where we are, so I just wanted to remind council and our citizens on the process to this point. So, Thursday is the developer come and go, from 3:30 to 5:00, and this is where we're going to hear one last time from our development community. As you know, we've had a very robust conversation with them throughout this process, on the codes, the technical manual, and this is kind of that last gut check. There are 6,250 parcels in town, and 4,700 of those are in private ownership. The balance of that is either the school district, the county, or the city. So, we have sent out 4,700 zoning letters citywide, and we specifically mentioned the property owner open house Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00. We are beginning to hear from some of our citizens that have questions, in some instances, they'd like to change the zoning, which is the place types, so, that will be an important meeting for us to begin to get the input and educate those to this point, haven't been tuned into what building Bastrop is about. On September 20th, which is Friday, we will be presenting the final drafts of the code, the technical manual, and the pattern book, which should also include thoroughfare plan, I'm sorry, I left that out of that sentence. We'll be sending that to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as to council. On the 26th, Planning and Zoning...
I'm sorry, city manager, can we go back to the 20th?
Yeah.
Is, normally when you send things to us, like for us, it's in a Dropbox and it's in our iPad, is it going to be posted where the general public can also see the document?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be put on the Building Bastrop website.
Okay. And, this is not a trick question, and I'm not trying to be ugly, do we think this is 8:00, 9:00 o'clock in the morning, do we think this is, it's 11:59 and it's still Friday? How, how close are we?
As far as uploading to this, we believe that the tech manual will be done tomorrow, the code is complete, we have one chapter to add to the code, which is going to update some references, potentially one chapter.
We still have some, some minor edits to do.
So, we think before 5:00?
It will be posted before 5:00, but it could be...
And I'm not trying to box you in a corner, but I, so, by 5:00, anybody, somebody can, whether you're on Planning and Zoning, a city council member, or a common citizen, and I don't mean common citizen, but just generally, anybody in the public who would like to, everyone will have access to all of those documents.
That is correct.
Councilmember Rogers?
I'm sorry, Lenny, you had mentioned something about a hard copy, of looking to be able to...
Yes, we're going to print off hard copies, we'll have that for council, we did that the first time with P and Z, this is complex business, so we will actually have them run off. So, what that may be is, you can read it online before 5:00, and we still may be making copies and presenting it, so it's, we'll work on that, the logistics, but we do believe y'all need hard copies of this, it will make it easier for y'all to flip back and forth. What you're going to find is, is that there have been some tables that makes this easy to digest, but they're referenced in other places, so I just think for flipping back and forth and piecing it together, a hard copy in this instance is way better.
And the hard copy will be available for P and Z as well?
Yes, we're going to make it for both.
So, P and Z and council have hard copies, the universe will have access to the online copy.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Ennis?
Well, when can we expect the hard copies?
Before I go home Friday night, you'll have it. That's the best I can do for you, sir.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm just trying to, all right, so we, now we all know what we're expecting on Friday, the 20th. Keep going.
On Thursday, the 26th, the Planning and Zoning Commission will have a public hearing. We're going to have a PowerPoint to walk them through it. We think that the way it is laid out is going to be very easy for the user. By design, the introduction will explain the why, but it's important of building, of the B3 codes, it will walk through the various components. There are seven different charts in the code that offer insight to the various pieces of the code, and they will be put at the very front. Each one of those charts reference specific sections of the code that if you want additional information, but our staff can literally sit down with the code, with our customer, and the introduction, and a highlighter, and when they leave, they've got their roadmap on what they need to do. So, I'm very excited about it from an ease of use, we're going to walk you through the flow chart tonight, relative to how that comes together. So, the mayor and I were visiting this afternoon, and the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to really be that litmus test for us. If they can't get it, the average citizen ain't going to get it, but we really think that they're going to be excited about, we understood the pieces, we just didn't know how it was going to come together, and I think the introduction and the analogy I used from Matt was, my grandmother used to crochet, and she'd crochet squares, and then when she got all the squares built, she'd put the squares together. That introduction chapter is putting all those squares together, and when you get done, you think, wow, this is pretty cool.
And city manager, one thing that we talked about, council, I've had a conversation with city manager this afternoon, Planning and Zoning will have a hard copy, they will have had it since Friday, it will be on the 26th that they will be looking at it, and I believe the city manager and staff are going to walk through a couple trial things. I'm Connie Schrader, and I'm buying the piece of property across the street from me, and I want to build a new house. What did the codes do? How do I know what the step is? I'm a developer, and I have a 20-acre plot that's infill, what do the codes say? What do I have to do? I'm buying acreage that's on the edge of the city limits, and I want to be annexed in, what do the codes do? And they're going to kind of walk through some different scenarios, and to her point, if Planning and Zoning can't understand what those steps are and can't find the words in the code to match it, if Planning and Zoning can't understand it, we need to step back from this. So, no pressure, Chair of P and Z, but they are truly going to be a really good stance, because if they come back and they're like, "We're golden," or, and I'm really expecting that they may have, if they've got some questions or some clarifications, it's going to be super helpful and make sure that what we're adopting is something that we can all be really proud of, which is, has been the whole goal from day one.
Yes, ma'am. So, the same night of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will be hosting a watch party in my office. When you have 4,700 letters going out, you can reasonably assume that 50 or 100 people, which, when you look at and do the math, it's less than 1%, are going to have questions, are going to come. So, we are committed to addressing each one of their questions individually, so we're going to be taking copious notes, understanding what their issue is, and assigning staff to reach out to them, so that when we roll around to the first public hearing with council, we have actively figured out a way to capture their interest and figure out a way to, as painlessly as possible, solve their question. On September 30th, that's going to be the joint meeting with city council and Planning and Zoning, that's going to give them an opportunity to do exactly what the mayor said. You know, we think 90% of it is great, we got it, but we still have concerns about these pieces, and here's the things that we think need to happen, or, man, it's golden, and we're ready to go, whatever the case may be, that's kind of when P and Z will hand off the process, and it goes to council. October 8th will be the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance adopting the thoroughfare plan and the B3 code, the manual and the pattern book. We are going to create one-page summaries for every one of the requests that we receive from citizens, that will acknowledge the address, the proposed zoning, the zoning they'd like to have, and their reason for that. An example is, we've, we've got a citizen that has come in and said, "Look, I own two pieces of property, they're side by side, one's owned one thing and one's owned another, I'd like both of them to be on the same thing." That seems like a pretty reasonable request. So, that's the why, we review it and go, "Yep, we agree with it, we recommend approval." And so, every one of these, we will try to summarize and put in a group all of the things that we think just are easy recommends, and there might be some that we just can't agree to for a particular reason. Well, on the 8th, we want to work through that in a very systematic way, so it's not overwhelming, and y'all give us some direction, and then on the 22nd, you can take formal action. Now, if folks come to you the first time on the 8th and we've not heard from them, or they have, they come on the 22nd, we haven't heard from them, they may be one else we have to address after the fact if you choose to do that, but we're going to do everything we can to make this as painlessly as possible for citizens to engage in this process and set y'all up for success in them too, so just know we'll be doing that. Then on October 22nd, we will do a second reading and adoption of the thoroughfare plan, the B3 codes, the B3 tech manual, and the pattern book, and then that's when you will formally adopt zoning to address the submitted zoning requests from the 4,700 letters, however many or few there are. So, that, at this point in time, is the next steps. I do have an item on next week's agenda to address any questions or anything that you might have that comes from your reading, so that we can address those early in the process as well. So, that's where we are, and if there are no questions for me, then we'll kick this off, and Matt, the Matts, are going to tag team the next items that we need some input from you on.
So, council, you have a flow chart in front of you, you might want to get that out and put it on top, and also, I want to encourage, this will be the third weekend, when you get the document, take a look at it, but don't be reading it like, oh my God, everything has to be completely perfect by the 24th. We really want Planning and Zoning to have vetted through it, and we're not trying to have a nuts and bolts discussion on the 24th. We're going to end up with a lot of items on the agenda, where you have really got to know where you are and how you're feeling about things, will be for the meeting for the 30th, which gives you 10 days, and the input from Planning and Zoning, and certainly by October 8th. I'm just kind of wanting to put a little bit of that caveat in there.
And mayor and council, to that point, we're going to review this annually. One of the things that we anticipate is that P and Z will review not only the codes, but the mandated review of the comprehensive plan annually, sometime in the April-May timeframe, with a joint meeting scheduled with council to provide their recommendations in June, and the timing of that is very specific, because if they have changes that would require a small area plan or a study, we need to be building the budget and including that, so that it doesn't sit out there for a year before something happens. So, please note that if you adopt this in October, it won't be too long before we will, by virtue of ensuring this never gets stale, amending it. So, to your point, it doesn't have to be perfect, but I can assure you, it's already way better than what we got.
All right, Mr. Lewis, dazzle us.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council, Matt Lewis, Simple City Design. As we have been working through the code, there are a few items that needed some modifications or addressing. Some were prompted by state law changes, some were looking at future development patterns and what may happen with future growth trends, others were to protect the city at current day, but looking forward. So, with that, one of the items that came forward during our conversations and our analysis of the code was parking lot designs. The current code standards already call for parking lots to be located in what's called a third layer of the lot, that's the back layer of the lot, not public facing, so you would have three layers of the lot, the front layer of the lot would be the public realm and the private realm where they match, the second layer of the lot is where the buildings go, the third layer of the lot is generally where, behind the buildings, and so, in the code currently, parking lots are required to be in the third layer of the lot. During this conversation, we had a dialogue regarding screening walls for parking lots or alternative ways of enhancing parking areas, and one of the comments came up was, "What if we added a minimum tree canopy into parking lots, so that they actually became tree-covered and the parking lots would be walkable and shaded equal to the street edge?" If you do recall, some of the regulations in the code, all street trees would be required to be planted along the public frontages, so, as you're walking down the streets or sidewalks, you will have trees over the sidewalks or awnings, so that you have provided shade, which would encourage walking. However, some of these parking lot designs could be rather large, depending on the type or style of development that's taking place. The current draft B3 TM has a statement that says, "All surface parking lots or parking areas shall have a minimum of 50% tree canopy coverage at full maturity of the trees." This would mean that if you're building a parking lot or a development, you would have to have 50% of the parking area be shaded, and what we would do is do an analysis based off of the tree species and the planting patterns and spacing of the patterns to equate to the 50% at full maturity of the trees. There are pros and cons to this, and so we'd like to discuss this with the council and see what your thoughts would be, whether this makes sense going forward, is this too stringent? Is it not stringent enough? And we wanted to hear your input regarding this item.
Mayor and council, before you discuss it, here was the additional thought that staff had when we debated this. You might recall when we started talking about parking requirements, and we were talking about P4, and P4 is residential housing that gets converted to commercial applications. And y'all had a conversation about, you know, the backyard, if we required some kind of crushed granite, then put concrete or asphalt on it, could go back to being grass if somebody wanted to convert it to a home. And because y'all have provided flexibility on building materials, then the question was, is if we've saved you money by not making you put in this gargantuan concrete parking lot, it doesn't seem too unreasonable to ask that you plant trees that may take 20, 30 years to mature to get the canopy at maturity, but it never happens if we don't require them to be planted. So, that just completes the thought of, of what he's saying, there's no right answer, except developers are not going to want to plant the trees, but again, it's just a value statement that we're asking you to work on relative to walkability, and this time of year, we are all looking for parking places with shade.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Are we considering how this, how planting trees is going to affect parking capacity, including ADA required parking?
Yes, sir, in some of the analysis, we believe that, you know, adding this requirement could require the lots to grow to actually hit the minimum requirements for parking, so you may have to have a larger lot in order to hit your minimum parking requirements, depending upon what the end user is, or what the building use is trying to become, in order to meet minimum standards for ADA complacency or parking ratios.
How did, so the trees would require you to have to have a larger lot?
Well, if you picture that you're having to... Well, if you picture that you're having to add, instead of just having a uniform parking space, parking space, parking space, parking space, you're going to have drive aisles, you're generally behind each parking space, you'll have about 24 feet for clearance for your drive aisle lanes, and then you would need spacing for the trees to be located as well. So, I mean, just, just food for thought.
Well, then that completely defeats the, you're saving money on the parking surface, right?
Potentially. I mean, it may become a wash, depending on the site. I mean, a lot of site constraints may actually inform these decisions of where the trees go. There could be a strip of land that's near a flood plain that they buffer, you know, and adds, there's a lot of dialogue.
Mayor Pro Tim, I totally, I'm sorry, I wasn't following his answer, and I interrupted you. It's still your floor, continue.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that's taken into consideration. The other consideration that I want to make sure, well, let me put this in form of a question. Are we also stipulating the placement of the trees, the spacing of the trees to ensure that somebody's not putting a line of trees on one side to meet the 50% capacity or 50% shaded area? Are we spacing out, are we considering spacing out?
Yes, sir. In the current draft, the spacing is not regulated by parking design. However, during the review process, it would go to the Development Review Committee for review, and at that time, we would hope that the Development Review Committee would make some recommendations, also reviewing the site to see what's the logical location. It's possible that, you know, that that could actually achieve the intent of the code in certain scenarios.
You said minimums. Did you mean maximums? Because we're not doing parking minimums.
Yes, ma'am. I didn't mean to say minimums, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's part of why, okay. Which one of you had your light on first?
I do.
Councilmember Jackson.
Not being a devil's advocate, because I'm very much a tree person, but where there are trees, there are birds, and I make sure that when I go to a parking lot, I don't park under a tree, because I don't want to have to continually wash my car. But I think the shade is good, but I don't like to have bird poop all over my car either.
Good point. Councilmember Ennis?
With the standard, a minimum of 50% tree canopy, basing it on the canopy, it all depends on what kind of trees are planted also. So, are we going to mandate those, or do we just expect the folks that are putting in the parking lot to understand that a certain kind of tree is going to give it more canopy?
There's a preferred plant list that's approved within the ordinance, and they would be required to use one of those specimens of trees. But you're correct, there's columnar trees, like palm trees, that are vertical, provide little shade, they'd be planting a lot of them. Hopefully, during the Development Review Committee's review of it, they would do an analysis of the species of tree being used, and then run the maturity of the tree at that percentage.
Okay, thank you.
My comment is very similar to Councilmember Jackson's. Not, I think about the grackles at HEB, not, not every tree is desirable. And then the other thing that I think of is, God bless you, there are, again, it's not that I'm opposed to trees, but there's walkability, and then there's a parking lot. And I don't let my kids play in the street, and I generally don't go to the parking lot to do my walking around. If I'm in a parking lot, I'm parking, and as opposed to driving down the street, walking, walking down the street. As far as a P-3, P-4 kind of thing, that's a small enough, that can be a small enough lot. And I realize we don't have lot minimums, and it can be varying sizes, and I'm, y'all have thought about this a lot, I'm trying to work through this in my mind. If it's in a house area and it's got a natural tree in the backyard, it's very unlikely they're going to mow down the tree to put up the, to put up their business. So, I'm, I just want to, when I'm going for seeking walkability, I'm generally not planning on walking the parking lot looking for shade. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I guess at full maturity, it says 50% coverage on that. What, what's going to be the determining factor on that? What season, at full plumage, or whatever, I'm not a tree guy. But at full bloom, is that, is that when it's going to be considered 50%? What about during the fall and winter? We're not achieving 50%. I just, I'm concerned of how we're regulating this.
Are you, are you just doing the math? This kind of tree has a 20-foot canopy, you have 40 feet across the parking lot, that means across this width, you got to have one of these trees.
Correct, yeah.
And actually, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson's question is excellent, because at full maturity, it's not going to give you 50% coverage all the time.
That's correct.
And, and when that tree dies, who's going to replace that tree? Who's forking, forking over the money for that tree? Because the developer is gone.
Good point.
Councilmember Rogers?
I'm Pro Tim.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim, everyone's Mayor Pro Tim.
I mean, I love the trees and I hate the grackles and all that, I'm just wondering if it's a, we're not trying to make, we're never going to make everything perfect, you know? And to the mayor's point, you know, parking lot is a parking lot, you know, it's not like we're trying to get our rocking chairs out there and sit under the tree. So, I'm just wondering if 50% is asking a lot of the developers? I mean, we're already raising a lot of the standards, we're expecting a lot, I'm just wondering if that's, we're shooting for the moon here.
Delete is also an option. If y'all don't like this at all, we just need to hear, we don't want to do it, we can take it out, move on.
50% is a lot, I'm just wondering if we can start out with something, we can always adjust this each year, we said we're going to look at it every year, you know, let's start out with a little bit or something, I'm not sure.
And one other downside I've thought about that is potential of this, let's say that the site is ripe or prime for redevelopment. Now, you've got a bunch of mature trees, and the site would have, you know, you'd have to cut the trees down in order to redevelop the site, which would be, I'm just bringing another long-term.
But they would have to bring that in a site plan.
They would, I've just, I just wanted to call attention to.
We would be looking at it, right?
Yes, ma'am. It would, it would be administrative type of plan. I just want to call attention to that.
Just like if they bring forward a regulating plan that doesn't have 50% of the trees in it, that also falls under your purview.
That's correct.
Just remember that everything in the code is nothing more than a guideline for staff to check the box, anything outside of that, they get to come explain it to you.
Yeah. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, who was first? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, one of the key components of what we're trying to do is fiscal sustainability. And I've just wondered, the tree replacement is one factor, the fact that there are trees that get to full maturity, they're going to have roots that are combined with that, is that going to tear the parking lot up? And there are going to be some cost factors, long-range cost factors in there. I'm not real sure what the cost benefit of mandating shade trees is going to give somebody in the parking lot.
Councilmember Rogers?
I was just wondering if we require them to have the trees or any green space, or are we requiring them to supply like a watering part so the tree gets watered continuously, like sprinklers? Is that part of the code?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There's irrigation, it's written in the code, trench specs, everything.
So, Matt, I feel like I'm feeling a, no, thank you. Personally, I think the trees along the street, I'm way more interested in that, in making sure that they live and making sure that they get to a canopy, that's the, that's the public realm. You know, it's the third layer, right? I mean, that's all the other reason of, I'm generally not going to walk into someone's backyard to do my walking about. So, council, are we kind of, okay?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be, thank you.
Gone, she said gone, let's go to the next slide.
The next item is the Iredale map. In 1920, Mr. Iredale created the Iredale map of Bastrop. And due to House Bill 2439, we can no longer regulate building materials unless it is designated within a historic district. And therefore, one of the ideas that was brought forward during this transition was, what if we use the Iredale district as the historic district for Bastrop? It was the original framework for the community, and in this circumstance, essentially, what would happen is the historic district ordinance would carry forward over this district, the pattern book then could become optional or mandatory throughout the district, and the materials then could be regulated throughout this district. With this inclusion into the B-3 Code, it brings some additional comments that would be required with regards to certificates of appropriateness and how those would be handled. Is every item within the district being handled by the HLC, or is some approved by the staff? Where would certificates of appropriateness be included? How would they be included and administered? And so, there's a series of questions, this is a pretty lengthy discussion, I imagine. And so, I've got two slides on this with regards to the COAs, but I believe it may be appropriate to start here with even the inclusion of the Iredale district at first.
Mayor and Council, there was a specific reason we picked this, and that is, is that with the new legislation, you can appreciate that the burden of proof is always ours to pay. The Iredale map was actually established in 1920, next year will be 2020. We actually have the original letter and minutes from when this was made, so this map now has, is 100 years old, and is the cleanest historical designation that we can do. We can just slap Exhibit A at the top of it, it is what it is. And it gets us beyond the 60 blocks of the Main Street designation. The map takes in the North End, it takes into the areas south of what is now 71, goes, I believe, all the way east to 95 and stops at the river. So, it is a very large ability, it's a large amount of real estate that allows us to regulate materials that we've been denied under our legislation. So, that gives you the history of why this was selected, because it's very clean in its reference to time.
Councilmember Ennis? I apologize, I think your light was on first.
That's all right, I have comments on this, but you might want to finish. I've done, I've done some studying on this since I wrote the first COA ordinance, but if you want to go on and finish, then I'll make my comments.
Oh, I'm prepared, go ahead, sir.
I read over the historic landmark ordinance several times, and I will, of course, accede to our legal eagles and to our planning director, but I see that this is, the COA is not particularly a problem from the standpoint that it's the first, the first item that is, is part of the COA condition is all of the standards identified, the design guidelines for the specific district in which it is located or met, that, that's, that's for administrative approval.
Councilmember Ennis, are you reading from the historic landmark ordinance? Is that what you're, okay. I'm just making sure.
I'm sorry, I should have said that. I see this as, in most cases, would, would be an administrative approval in most of the areas, but I, a question I have for you is, could we institute sub-districts underneath the Iredale that coincide with our character districts, is that, am I using the right?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And, and then, you know, you're going to have different design specifics for each one of those districts, and that should be able to give you some leeway in that way, wouldn't you think?
Absolutely, that's a great idea.
That's basically what I had for you. You know, it's, it's, I, I don't see this as being a problem, and I was at HLC the other night when they brought it up, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Although it cuts a fairly wide swath through our city, do we have an idea how much, what percentage of our city the Iredale map would cover?
Oh, man, you asked a question I didn't know.
I don't know that answer.
I mean, I, I think that's good, I think this is, those of us who do not live in the historical area, this is one of those deals, is it good for the city, doesn't hurt any citizen? And the right answer is, is yes and no. So, it's, and it fits that criteria. I'm just not real sure if it's, if it's going to, if it's over half, if it's going to really do what we want it to do for the city. And I'm, I'm going to defer to Councilmember Ennis, who knows much more about this. I, I really don't have an opinion on this, because I'm not affected in any way, shape, or form of an opportunity.
I have a question to share my ignorance, and that is, if you live in a place like Hunter's Crossing, and they have deed restrictions and all their stuff, does that override the most recent legislation?
No, ma'am, those are regulated.
So, to Mayor Pro Tim Nelson's point, this can protect a good portion of the citizens, but it does not protect all of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that how you see it as well, Councilmember Ennis?
You mean, the, it certainly doesn't, looking at the Iredale map, it doesn't.
It doesn't cover Riverside Grove and Hunter's Crossing?
Right, right, nothing across the river.
No, ma'am, because given the, the time period with which they were designed, they would fail the historical relevance test.
Okay. So, and I know we had conversations about east of 95 is the lovely toad habitat, so are we saying you adopt the Iredale map, and then you appropriately, within each district, do what is appropriate within that district? I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly.
So, I'm not sure I processed that, so let me, let me tell you our intent, and then you meet me where I am and help me get where you are, how about that? So, the Iredale is only going to be an overlay, and its only, its only purpose is, is to create a historical district to meet the state law that allows us to designate a historical district for purposes of managing materials. That's its sole purpose.
Okay.
And because the Iredale map did not cross 95, it won't take into account the toad habitat, because.
Oh, it does not, I thought it did go across 95.
No, it stops just at 95.
Oh, I thought I looked at a map and y'all said, "This is 95," and it went past. I thought, it crosses 95, doesn't it, Trey? This is a map that stops here, but the Iredale map does not stop there.
So, is that our city limits?
No, this is our city limits. See, this, help us out, Mr. Jones.
So, Mayor, this came out at HLC also, and in the interest of time, in the interest of moving this forward, in the interest of knowing whether or not council wanted to do this, we set the ball in motion, full realizing that there might be some areas within that original map that may not be appropriate, but it wasn't appropriate for staff to determine that, that's a policy decision, that you all need to make a decision where those areas may not be appropriate. HLC had discussed that they, if appropriate, that y'all could ask them to look at that and then make recommendations to you all on areas that may not be appropriate for the Iredale overlay to apply to.
But, but if the Iredale overlay is only for materials.
Mm-hmm.
Why would you shrink it? Why, why, exactly, why would you shrink it, and why wouldn't you let, let the materials be appropriate by character district?
Sure.
Is that an option?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, obviously, we're running, taking this exercise because of some of the torturous laws that the, that the state passed. I, I mean, I have to ask a question, does it, I want to ask the city attorney, does it pass legal muster if we do this?
Okay, but you guys have to turn on your mic, or we can't hear you.
The only requirement is that you have a code that meets certified local government standards that day, and then, and the city does, and they have actually been working with the state, with THC, to kind of revamp that ordinance regularly, because there, you guys, it's my understanding that y'all are looking to become a CLG. So, the only requirement is that you have an ordinance that meets the CLG standards, which we feel the city of Bastrop does. So, then you are able to establish new districts, and then you could regulate building materials, because that's the exception in 2439.
Mayor, what's a CLG?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
What's a CLG? Thank you.
And your ordinance just has to meet the standards to become eligible. You don't actually have to be a CLG, your ordinance has to meet the criteria to become eligible, which ours does. Now, we're still in the process and should be done with our application by the end of, or end or 1st of October to submit for that, but the ordinance, as it's written, is able or, it meets a criteria for the CLG, so therefore, we could enforce materials with the passage of this.
Councilmember Ennis, if I remember correctly, it's been a desire of yours to be a CLG for a very long time.
Very long time.
All right. Okay, so, overall, council, we seem somewhat appropriate to, let's protect everybody that we can. We can't go back 100 years and make Iredale exactly match the city limits lines, it is what it was 100 years ago. And is there, do, is it beneficial to council for HLC to spend some time with this, or are you fairly comfortable with if we're only using it to, to restrict materials? That's enough of an input. Councilmember Rogers?
I think we should allow it to cover as much as possible without limiting it, whatever, you know, whatever the map covers, and then let it break down into districts like Councilmember Ennis has broken out.
The sub-district sort of thing. Councilmember Ennis?
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, if I go off base here, but I don't see that HLC can fine-tune this any more than what we're doing unless we send it back to them. can fine tune this any more than what we're doing unless we send it back to them and they define the districts, but the, the sub-districts. But the sub-districts are already defined for us if we want to go that route. And our ordinance addresses COAs in a certain way that gives us the latitude to do administrative. So I don't know what else. Help me with this. I don't know what else HLC can add to it.
I was really just, I didn't want it to be like, oh, there's HLC members at home going, I can't believe you're not going to give us a chance. That, I was, I don't want to take something from them if they, if we feel like we're missing input.
I don't think you will. I think if anybody, they'll be mad at me.
Yeah, it was, it was voted on with unanimous approval. They fully supported it and loved the idea.
Great. Mayor Protem Nelson?
I guess my question, and Mr. Jones, it may be more for you than, than for Mr. Lewis, Matt squared, the, is there a downside to doing this?
Other than the fact that somebody, well, I don't think, well, I don't think so from a long-term perspective. I think it, I think it preserves the historic character of the downtown area or of the Iredelle area. It certainly would go a long way in giving the city, the city the ability to preserve property value by regulating materials. You know, there might be some level of permitting process that one might have to go through. But other than that, I don't think that there is necessarily a downside for the long-term view.
Does it create an inordinate amount of work for, for your planning staff?
No, I don't believe so. There, for example, anything interior, it doesn't, you know, matter. It's only exterior. But I don't think it, it would create an amount of work that'd be unmanageable for us.
There are some citizens that aren't, that don't like rules, and this is going to be another overlay, right? So there's always, that, that potential exists.
But we have building material requirements today.
Right, I understand. Councilmember Ennis?
And that's my only concern is in areas, let's take the mayor's area, for areas that have not had to deal with COAs in the past, can you see this being as facilitated as possible so it doesn't seem monorous? I mean, this part of town already understand, that have landmarks already understand a COA.
Right.
But other parts of town don't. And can it?
So long as that-
Mr. Jones, can I ask his question in a, in a way that, for me to test for understanding? Take my area, for example. It's, it's a character district. You would have a list of approved materials. If I buy a lot and I want to build a house, and my house is made out of the list of those approved materials, can it be administratively approved?
Yes, unless you take that authority away.
And make it, so it's as fluid as possible, that it's not, that we're not putting another-
So make it an administrative approval instead of, if they meet the criteria, make it an administrative approval instead of having to go through and get a COA at-
So let's go at this a different way.
Sure.
This would allow council to adopt local amendments to our international building codes and allow materials specific to our environment if they wanted to manage fire or some other things that they otherwise would not have. Because if somebody comes in, because those materials are, are, are something we can now regulate because they're in the code somewhere, but we could have local amendments that would allow us to regulate building materials for things like fire, that we currently wouldn't have the authority in the area that are most likely to be impacted by fire quick, first.
Within the district?
Within that district.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we lost that regulating ability with the new law.
Bingo.
So we're not asking, we're not talking about adding additional rules. We're talking about maintaining the public safety materials that we have.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, everybody's cool? Awesome. What else you got?
Wonderful. All right, we'll get that added into the code and calibrated.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Your input and knowledge is extremely helpful. Okay, Matt squared, who's up?
That would be me. Okay. One thing that has come up within this code is-
Oh, sorry. We're, we're taking a, Matt, we're going to take a bio break. We've been at this for quite a while. So it is 7:49, and we're going to take a five-minute break. I got a thumbs up. It is 7:55. Matt Jones, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor. So with, with the new code, you'll notice that there are new, or are no permitted use start tables. That's not news to anybody. We've talked about doing, doing away with those for some time. So without having regulating uses, how are we going to regulate, or what are, what are we going to use, or what tool do we have to use to regulate land use? And the answer to that is nuisances. And P&amp;Z has had some discussions on that, and I'll get to that in a second. But this pie chart right here represents the conditional use permits that are currently, have been approved in the city, and there's 126 total. So of those, 42 of those have been for manufactured homes in single-family residential areas. 15 have had to do with accessory units, most of which are over the minimum square footage. 10 of, or 15, oh, yeah, 15 for accessory units. 10 had to do with churches or church uses. 9 had to do with the height of either like an antenna tower or a hotel, or even the performing arts center, had to get a CUP to be able to be built. 9 were for bed and breakfast, and 6 were for home occupations. I will, and so P&amp;Z had some, well, let me go back, let me go forward one more time. So you saw 35 other. So of those, I was able to identify 15, and some of these had like double, so it just wasn't worth putting in a pie chart. But we had to have a conditional use permit for a school office in single-family residential from Mina, for, to be able to have a two-car garage. At one point, somebody had to get a conditional use permit for duplexes, for two auto uses in a commercial district, for an office for the children's advocacy center.
Wait, wait, go back. You said auto uses in a commercial district?
Yes, ma'am.
Required a conditional use permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it wasn't on the use chart?
That's right.
Okay.
And it was Autozone and one other. And it required a CUP in that district, and so that, that's there. The, there was one at the middle school, and that was for, let me, pardon me. That was, it was the office portion. It was because it's in the SF3 district. There's two municipal buildings that are built in single-family residential that had a CUP. A heli stop at the hospital, breweries and wineries, so in downtown, required a CUP. Dental office in the certain, in the neighborhood services. There was a dog grooming that got a CUP in the neighborhood services. The mini storage actually out on 71 required a CUP in that zoning district. An electric substation required one. And then to actually replace a single wide trailer with a double wide trailer required a conditional use permit. So I go through that to tell you, we haven't issued any conditional use permits that aren't being dealt, dealt with on the current codes, or the proposed codes. So the proposed codes are going to take care of it in building form, building type, and then how they address the street, and then we're going to deal with it, of course, by nuisances. And so I guess the point of this is, is if we're not regulating by use, are we okay with regulating by nuisances? And I can tell you, we had some pretty spirited discussions about this at P&amp;Z, and ultimately they walked away saying, we don't need them. We're going to regulate with the code, and we're going to regulate through nuisance. And we talked about daycares, and we talked about several different uses. And at the end of the day, they were fine with, if you can't smell it, hear it, see it, or, you know, dust particulars aren't, or particulates aren't flying all over the place, and it's okay. And so that's where they landed. So we just wanted to have a conversation with you, show you historically what's been approved. It's largely land use, and it's largely accessory structures, and height and things like that that we'll regulate in the code. And again, if it's not in the code, it doesn't mean you can't do it. They, they just have to come and talk to you all.
On the brewer, can you go to the other?
Yes, ma'am.
This is awesome information. The brewery and winery, no matter what our code, we still have to do the Texas Alcohol and Beverage Commission stuff.
KBC does, yeah. But specifically now, a brewery or winery, so Copper Shot-
Yeah.
-had to come and get a CUP.
So they have to do TABC, and they had to get a conditional use permit.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, Mayor Protem Nelson?
If we did away with CUPs, what does it help or what does it hurt?
So I think it's more flexible. I think certainly in your P4 district, it would allow it to organically function as you all want it to. And then it would allow us to take care of our business and regulate nuisances. It would allow the flexibility in the code that you're looking for. And kind of the unintended consequence of having them is we have a lot of these things. For instance, we've approved 42 for manufactured homes. Clearly, the community does not have a problem with it, so why do we continue to make people go through that process?
Mayor Protem, I would add that it creates a level of bureaucracy that is pointless, and it is one of those things that makes the bureaucracy that work have a bad name. And I know in the case of like Copper Shot and the-
Cripple.
Ice, what is Tom calling the-
Iron, Iron Bridge Ice House.
Yeah, it, it just creates unnecessary time. They're ready to go, they're waiting around on us, and it is, it's just, at the end of the day, if you don't care about uses, it's just, you'll get gold stars for eliminating it.
So the rest of his question was, what's bad about eliminating it?
I, I don't think there is a bad. I think that we do a good job of regulating through nuisance, and I think that that's a, a great way to do it. I think it, it speaks volumes to the original, when you go back to the, the creation of zoning, it was to keep a smelting plant away from a house. Life safety is what it goes back to. And I think as long as we can regulate life safety through the nuisance code, that, that there shouldn't be a downside to it.
Counsel, anybody dying to have conditional use permits? Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I just wanted to make a, restate something I think you stated meetings ago when we first talked about nuisances, that it's not going to be like, oh, I smell it, Lyle smells it. The chief has, has ways to, to gauge, you know, scent and sound, so it's not just going to be just whether somebody likes it or doesn't like it. There are guidelines, that there's instruments that we can judge this on, correct?
So it's not a subjective, I'm mad at my neighbor, so I'm saying you're making-
The public knew that, they might not have heard, heard us six months ago talking about this, that there's ways that we can-
That's absolutely correct. So lights, lights bill over, for example, would be like, you cannot be above X-foot candles at this location on the property, and then we'll have a, a light meter to go and check for that. And if you're under that, it's not a nuisance. It's very clear cut.
Have reasonable parameters.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I don't think you're going to know the answer. Have we ever turned them down? Have we ever turned down a conditional use permit?
I'm not a betting man, but if I was a betting man, I'm sure you have at some point, but-
It's a pretty small percentage if it's at, you know. That's the other thing. You always say yes.
And that's the point. We've approved 42 of these for the same use, and yet we continue to make them come before us.
And if you go to your chart, the, to your point on the bed and breakfast and home occupations, those were approved a gazillion years ago because we used to struggle with defining home occupations. Now, if you have an iPad, you could be working at home, and it could be home occupation. So some of those wouldn't even make sense if we kept the process, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, looks like those are gone. What else you got?
The next item that we had realized that needed some attention was the employment center place type. The employment centers, there are some areas of town that are going to receive employment center zoning from, and we did not allocate base standards for those areas. Therefore, we had to give them standards because they are zoned. And so what we did is, we went through an analysis to see what would fit most appropriately. And what we've come up with in the-
Hang on, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were zoning things like-for-like. So what like are you zoning EC?
The industrial areas.
And that's it?
The industrial districts and the economic development property.
Ask your question again, ma'am.
We said the proposed zoning is like-for-like. If you're single-family seven, you're going to be P3. I'm saying, what is the current zoning that you're saying the like zoning is an EC?
So the industrial park, but y'all designated, when we went through the character districts like the Vista, y'all designated as a opportunity to designate for BEDC to do recruitment to.
Yes.
So it's on 71. I believe that there is some things in the Cattlemen District that has employment center designation in it as well. No?
So the like-to-like was any areas that were light industrial or industrial park. The EDC defined places that, that could potentially have that. So the creation of this district allows council to, to determine that when, as a project comes in.
And that's what I thought, because I was afraid, what I didn't want to do is, Lyle and I own property next to each other, it's currently zoned the same, and I get EC and he doesn't, or he gets EC and I don't. That's why I thought we needed to be careful. So we said the district, we thought employment center might make sense, but they have to come ask for the zoning for, if, if it, P5 doesn't take care of it or whatever, right?
So let me, let me clarify. They, in the character districts designated like the Vista's, would be a place for it.
That is correct.
But there will not be EC on the land unless it's EC now.
Nobody is getting, they're not going from a single-family to an EC.
Right.
Yes. Okay, we're saying the same thing. So the only EC zoning that someone is going to have when we do the zoning change right now, because everyone will be thrilled, and so it will be exactly as we're proposing, they are industrial or light industrial right now.
Correct.
Okay. And then other properties, we are designating that there are points that we fully expect there's a potential to be an employment center.
Yes.
Okay.
And it speaks to that in the, yes, that's right.
Okay. Is that everybody on, on board? Okay.
So in order to bring those properties into compliance, we reviewed the standards of the place type standards. And rather than writing individual standards, we feel it could be appropriate to use the place type standards for P5 for the lot, impervious cover requirements, the lot coverage requirements. And all of the default standards would provide for flexibility, with the exception of the building types. Generally, in industrial areas, the building types that are allowed under P5 would not be appropriate in those districts. And in fact, if they were, they would probably want to become P5 in order to hit the right entitlements. Also, in industrial areas, the lot occupancy, which is the amount of the frontage of the lot that the building takes up. In P5, it requires 80% of the frontage of the lot must contain a building. That also doesn't make much sense, and so we recommend that going away. One other item I found since producing this would be, instead of the P5 block standards, which would be 330 feet, may not be the appropriate dimensions for these buildings, they're going to want larger lots. And so what we would recommend is P2 farm lots would be appropriate standard. So instead of 330-foot fast drop blocks, use the farm lot as the base block dimensions. And so that was the only other catch I caught since this analysis.
And so we're clear, if it's a P2 block, and yes, we know it can be different, are you going to give them different EC building types, or you're just going to say you're not restricted to P5?
They're just not restricted to P5.
Okay.
And all of the other parameters would be restricted. And if it is not currently zoned EC, and they would be bringing new requests in, all of the standards would be negotiated with the DRC and brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council for approval through a zoning concept scheme. And that's where they would lay out their buildings, their dimensions, and all of their standards. And essentially, what they would do is they would fill in the chart with the end user that they're bringing in, or the individual that's trying to develop the property, and those standards would match and emulate those patterns.
So another way to say that in layman's terms is, you're in the bluffs, we've allowed an employment center, there's no employment centers out there now, somebody buys a piece of property, they're going to have to go through planning and zoning, and come to City Council and say, this is what I'm planning on doing with this acreage, so that everybody around them knows what it's going to look like, and knows what's now going to be in their neighborhood that was not previously in their neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So it's fairly similar to getting rezoning that we have now, but they would be following regulations that when it's built, it would blend with the character district that they reside in.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, the unintended consequence of this that we have determined is likely to make BEDC staff nervous is there is no assurances. So if you're out recruiting a new business, what we have said by all intents and purposes of words on the page, that we have saved this land for commercial applications that will generate economic development. We've used some broad words that it's, it's intended for economic development-type activities. So the difference between the very regimented code that we have now and this code, in my my opinion, is nothing, because with the very regimented code, you're not going to get a, a prospect that's likely to meet it. So they're going to have to go through a planned development process. It costs a ton of money. What you've done is you've provided the flexibility that says, we're open to look at whatever, as long as you meet the overall intent. But it's different. So we're just raising the flag that BDC may be uncomfortable with different, the market may be slightly uncomfortable with different, but they can market that as a planned development all day long. We'll call it EC, but they can call it whatever the market needs it to be. But I've done economic development and planning a long time, and no two deals are the same, and every one of them has to go somewhere, because there's always the exception to the rule. So most of them know coming into the process that they're going to have to go through this, but there's not going to be the, the 22 pages of all the criteria that they then have to negate in a planned development. So just want to put that out there at this point.
But the reality is, large industrial-type stuff, you're not going to approve in the middle of a historic district anyway. It's going to be out in the industrial park, that's already going to be EC. And if you think about even the, um, footprints that retail and commercial buildings are going to, it's smaller, not bigger, so there's a very good chance they can meet P5 standards in rock and roll.
Very possible. Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And they could, they would know if they're zoned P5, they would know what the regulations are for P5, and their P5 organic use of that parcel may end up making it an EC.
Yes, ma'am. And furthermore...
And they don't have to have EC to build a place where people can come to work.
Correct. And, and just to highlight, uh, Mrs. Humble's point, this would be almost a straight zoning, rather than having to write all the standards for PDD, it just saves six to eight months of, of time and money from them as well.
Just follow P5.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, two factors are running through my mind. One is, is that from the very start of this conversation, we said that, that, that commercial development should be market-driven. We, we're not that, as creative as some of the private sector out there is going to come and bring something to our fair city. And the other fact is, is that we're not going to allow detrimental development. And so we, we, we're not working in a vacuum here, none of this stuff stands alone, it's all part and parcel of the same package, so I'm good.
Anybody upset? Everyone is happy. What else you got?
That's great. Uh, next to our character district renaming, uh, proposals, um, both of these character districts, uh, were brought to us by either council members or members of the community for name changes.
Oh dude, your picture should have been the zoning map with the two highlighted that you're talking about changing.
Oh, sorry.
Where's the, do we have one of those maps? Where, where's the bluffs? The current bluffs?
I don't have a character district.
Is that where I live?
The bluff is Tahitian Village.
No, it's Tahitian?
No.
The bluff's is the industrial park.
This is, yeah.
Well, Tahitian, I don't live in an industrial park.
I don't have a map in front of me. Does anybody have a map?
I don't have the character district map with me.
Oh, I know.
Oh, so close, man, so close. Oh, yeah. Do you have one on your, on your, um, on your, on your laptop?
Oh, I do, but I can't, I'm not connected.
Except that your laptop's not what's showing. Okay, will somebody look at it and just tell us where it is?
They need to build it.
It's...
Yeah.
Councilmember Rogers is going, duh, I live there, I know exactly where it is.
But, but it also is the industrial park, it is the, um, the law enforcement area of the county. Um, it is, um, Jackson Street leading into the industrial park. Um, it will be QT, it will be Walgreens. Um, does it go, um, Matt, let me give this back to you so you can look at it, does it include the funeral home all the way to the front of Tahitian Village?
Yes. I think so. I think so.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Councilmember Rogers, since you live in the, currently the bluffs, how do you feel about Pine Village?
Actually, both me and council member.
And council member Jackson as well.
Jackson does too, and we both discussed it, we didn't like the word bluff, so my husband said, well, it's, it's the Pine 46 in Tahitian Village, so he said, why don't you just call it the Pine Village? And I said, well, there you go.
Well, there you go. Is anybody opposed to Pine Village? Councilmember Jackson, do you like Pine Village?
It's not the word.
Okay.
Check the box, man, next.
Pine, Pine Village.
Just don't call it North End.
Yeah, see, you're just being ugly. You are being ugly. Ignore him, keep going.
And the next district was the water district?
Okay, but I have to say that Ms. Hoover, and, because I, I absolutely wanted to acknowledge, um, water is, uh, there's a river district and a water district, and we got several folks with, based on flooding and stuff, people don't want to live in the water district, that, and water district doesn't even have Water Street in it, so there were a lot of people that did not want it to be water. Ferry was suggested, but the other one, um, that Ms. Hoover told me was because the Higgins family owned a lot of that property for a long, long time. She had suggested Higgins Bottoms. Higgins Bottoms, because they used to call it the, the bottoms, apparently, I was told, Ms. Hoover says so. Um, Ms. Hoover is the only person who has suggested that to me. I'm not, I'm not super, I, I don't care, that's just another idea, but I didn't want us to adopt Ferry and have Ms. Hoover say, I told you, I thought it should be Higgins Bottoms, so, um, y'all can chime in.
Do we have any other, uh, districts that are, that are, that are named for a person or a family?
No, sir, we do not.
No. Actually, there you go.
Actually, I, I don't want to disagree with Ms. Hoover, but I thought that, uh, I, most of the Higgins property is still on the other side of the river.
From the river district.
Uh, now, our church, the Episcopal Church, was built by the Higgins, so maybe it was, that was part of their property too, but, uh, I know the majority of the remaining Higgins property is across the river.
Well, I, I, and I know, uh, former council member Jones, we had had conversations about naming the alleys and stuff, but I think Mayor Protem Nelson makes, brings up a good point. If out of 13 districts, we have one with a family name, we may be borrowing trouble. So, everybody okay with Ferry?
Totally agree.
All right, it's Ferry. What else you got?
We'll update that. Thank you.
You're doing good.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we just wanted to show you all how we were bringing, um, the code into compliance with House Bill 3167.
I'm sorry, may, I may I interrupt just for a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're good with, but, uh, Mayor...
Oh, is it North Park or North End? That's what he's asking me.
Yes.
It, it was North End.
Yeah, North End.
Yes.
The North End.
It's currently North End.
And that's the way that it's currently worded.
Okay.
That's why it's not on the list, because there wasn't a proposal to change it.
I, I think it was made abundantly clear what the name of it was, and it wasn't going to be North Park.
And unless some council members change out and somebody comes up with three votes to rename it, but that, currently, we are not there, correct, Mr. Councilmember Peterson? It is North End? Is North End? Okay.
That's correct. And so, um, this is the new flowchart for the way that the code would work, and, um, we're really excited that we're able to accomplish this. We believe it's going to streamline your development process, it's going to make it more predictable, more fluid, as well as allow for infill development to take place in a more rapid manner through an administrative, uh, type of process. The first step you would do is research the property, and it would say, research your character district and your place types for your subject property. Um, if it does not need a zoning change request, you would go over here, if it does need a zoning change request, all properties must go through a zoning concept scheme, which would be submitted to show the place type allocation and, um, the street network and those types of elements.
And Mayor and Council, this is, um, the exact, um, uh, process that you adopted on August 27th, that he's describing, and he will tell you, there's going to be one change that makes this different than what you've already approved.
Councilmember Innis, did you have a question?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to keep be cognizant of the lights. Okay, Mr. Lewis, keep going.
Okay, so if you, if you do not need a zoning change, and your property is over 3.4 acres, you must submit a regulating plan. The regulating plan would allocate your street network, block allocation, civic spaces, and it would become a, a development plan. If it's, uh, property is under 3.4 acres, and if it's platted, you can go directly to pulling building permits. If it is not platted, then you would go to see if your property more than four lots. If yes, then you would need a preliminary plat, which would go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City, actually, no, I'm sorry, preliminary plats would be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would be a, a, a public conversation at P&amp;Z. If, um, let's see here, once you submit the reg...
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you said preliminary plats go before the Planning and Zoning, I thought that went to the DRC.
For, for preliminary plats, they're going to be a public conversation that the Planning and Zoning Commission would approve.
The only administrative plat that goes, um, that's approved, that doesn't go to P&amp;Z is an administrative plat, but all plats go through DRC for review before they're either administratively approved by the Director of Planning, or they're put on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda for approval.
How do you know that, looking at this chart?
Um, if we put all the details on this chart, it would have been...
No, no, but I, the reason I'm bringing it up is because the zoning concept scheme says it's reviewed by the DRC, so you're saying that submit regulating plan where the property, property platted, yes or no? Are you saying both times they go by the DRC?
So as a part of the review process, when a plat enters the door, or a regulating plan enters the door, it all crosses the DRC. And we do that because the law says that if anything is disapproved, we have to state why. So everything goes through the DRC. If it is approved, it moves on with no comment. If it's disapproved, we will take formal action, we will vote, we will acknowledge why that, that disapproval happened, and then the final person, whether it is a, um, Planning and Zoning Board, or is the City Engineer, or the Director of Planning, then has the formal documentation to sign off on, and it's been trusted but verified.
Okay, but we answered the question because it's the second line of the blue box, right? If you need a plat, submit preliminary plat for review by the DRC, and then it goes to a proper comment.
And we can clean up that language and take out the minutia.
No, that makes sense. No, no, I, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
I thought it wasn't on there, and it really is, so I, I, well, you're good, you're golden.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, and, um, if you do have less than...
I'm sorry, Councilmember Innis?
Oh, it's okay.
Uh, just for the people, uh, watching, could you define DRC again?
Design Review...
Development Review Committee.
Development Review.
Yes, yes, sir, and it's an administrative staff body.
Yeah, I know what it is.
Oh, yes, sir.
I just was hoping that we could define it for people watching, since we were throwing around the acronym.
Yeah, so the Development Review Committee would approve, um, also administrative plats. So if they have less, uh, four lots or less, that would be called an administrative plat, and, uh, they would go through this sequence here. So the administrative plat would go down, submit an administrative plat, the administrative plat would then get approved, uh, if it met the minimum standards, and go to residential building permits once again. If you did submit a preliminary plat, then you would go to your public improvement plan, and you would submit your public improvement plan to make sure that it's in, that it's consistent with the, uh, standards of the code. Then you would submit your final plat for the sections being, uh, developed at that time.
And your public improvement plan is really construction drawings?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
And public frontage plan, that's, yes. And, uh, then you would submit your final plat, your final plat would then be approved if it met minimum standards, and, uh, whether it be commercial, multifamily, then you would submit site plans, if it's residential, then you begin building permits. We believe that we've really cleaned up the process, this allows for a very fluid process. I'm extremely proud of all the work that went into this, both from the city staff's perspective and from our perspective, and the, and the city attorney's office as well. We believe that we've achieved the, uh, House Bill 3167, and integrated the actual procedural provisions into the code to emulate this process, to make it so, and, um, now you all have just two clean plating processes.
So Mayor and Council, in order to, um, make this function based on, uh, the process that you've adopted, when you adopt the code on October 22nd, um, there will also be a, um, schedule of uniform submittal dates for regulating plans, because we have to get that in and out within 30 days. Um, we will amend the development manual, and it will now include checklist for the regulating plans, so that, um, this flowchart, then every step of that, where we are measured by House Bill 3167, with the, um, the 30-day provision, you will have submission schedules, um, checklist, and all of that will be rolled up and incorporated in your development manual. So I'm thrilled that we're adopting a new code, and we're not having to reinvent the wheel, and with minor adjustments, we're all moving on the same, um, sheet of music.
Okay, this is a great piece of paper. At, at the bottom, you have CC as City Council, but you have it spelled out as City Council on top, so you don't really need the CC, because I don't think you ever use the CC. Um, but to their point, since we referenced the DRC, it'd be awesome if we just added DRC, CC, P&amp;Z, DRC, and then it would just always be with this document.
Yes, ma'am, we'll clean that up, thank you.
Oh, yeah, but that... Great, great flowchart.
All right.
Makes, makes sense. And, and your section XXX is, once we get everything finalized, then you're referencing the section of the code, so they know right where to go.
We'll put sections and page numbers. Send them right to it.
All right. Good job.
This is, this last slide is me, and it's just reiterating, uh, I guess, ending where we started. Um, we already know that the process for addressing requests for zoning changes, and as I mentioned, we are anticipating that at the public, uh, at the Come and Go Open House Thursday night, at the public hearing for P&amp;Z, and the public hearing at Council, we could potentially get more folks. And so, um, we are going to create a one-page form to easily capture the request, the reason for, um, the request. Staff will review and provide comments and a recommendation, and then on the 8th, we will develop a PowerPoint presentation to facilitate a very methodical discussion. Uh, you might think back to how the drainage waivers were handled during the moratorium, it'll be that same concept, we'll very quickly be able to, to go through, and the ones that are no brainers, um, I think y'all will be able to deal with that, and then the ones that require policy decisions, uh, you'll have an opportunity to do that. Uh, we hope to get the bulk of this done on October 8th, so when we actually ask you to adopt the ordinance on the 22nd, we can fix the place type map to reflect the changes that you are willing to do, um, so that there will be very limited, um, need to come back after the fact and, um, open that up. So I just wanted to help you as y'all start processing, I've been told that there's quite a bit of conversation on Facebook about what this is and what this means, but that doesn't always translate into traffic for the city. But if it does, I wanted you to know what the process is, and for those at home that have some questions, we strongly urge you to come to the Open House on Thursday evening. We certainly want to visit with you, if not, reach out to staff during the day, we have a planner on duty, and they can certainly, uh, assist you. Uh, but if we have citizens that have questions or concerns, uh, we want to, uh, be able to address them, and they don't have to wait until October 8th to bring that to the city's attention, um, before City Council. Uh, they can come in, and we can take that information today.
Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Matt Squared, thank City Manager. Uh, we did have a citizen signed up to speak, Debbie Moore, and when we took the break, she told me, you guys are having the right, you've already answered most of my questions, you're having a good conversation, and I believe she's at home, perhaps with an adult beverage, but that would be, um, I, I don't know that for a fact, I'm just making an assumption. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I just got a quick question for City Manager. Is it possible I can get a copy of just the target dates?
Get a copy of what, sir?
The, the target dates that you referenced in, in the first...
Yes, sir, I can, uh, email those to y'all, and I will do that this evening.
Thank you.
All right, yes, and, um, Matt Jones, you showed a slide that we did not have in our packet with your conditional use permits, so basically, everything you guys showed tonight is awesome, if it's not already in the Dropbox, please make sure it gets put in the Dropbox. That, just an overall request. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Council, now we get to spend some time with Ms. Waldron. We're on 2D, annual review of the financial policy by City Council. Ms. Waldron?
Hello again. So, the full ordinance with red lines is in your packet, but I have just outlined some of the things that have been amended or added to this particular ordinance.
Try to move the microphone closer, because I can hardly hear you, so I know folks at home aren't hearing you.
This ordinance was last adopted in September 26th of 2017. One of the sections that has been updated fairly significantly is the operating budget. Section 4A preparation, this section was expanded quite a bit to add language straight out of the charter, just to better define that preparation process in the policy. In the planning section, we just added some language regarding council workshops, y'all's participation in that planning, and removed some sections that we were not using anymore. I had that twice in there, I noticed. On the revenue management section, on the property tax, we just kind of put some more meat in there, just kind of defining the two tax rates, and how those work, and where those are in the budget. In the expenditure control section, define the categories that we typically use in our groupings, and so just define that a little bit better in the policy. And the grants financial management, we cleaned that section up as far as what the policy is when we have a solicitation for a grant, and what the policy is when we are accepting a grant. Y'all have any questions for me?
Councilmember Ennis? Let's wait for the train.
I have two concerns with the changes that have been made. Under Section 4, operating budget, Section A, preparation, I'd like to see us remove the last paragraph, and that is the paragraph, I want to say right off the bat that I am a hundred percent supporter of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Program. I'm very, very pleased that we have received that designation, but I don't think that it is, I do not think we should have that in our policies. I don't see why that, we should define that we must follow that particular guideline. And we have talked about the timeline for the budget for next year, and I don't know if this council is all in agreement that is, the budget is going to be published no later than 90 days. So, I think that whole, I think it's a good goal to submit it according to the Finance Association's guidelines, but I don't think it ought to be in the procedures.
So the 90 days is what they require for their submittal? It's not our requirement for when that budget book would be prepared as far as internally? That's just their requirement?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't say that in here, so I just don't think that's an important part of council's policy, is to have that paragraph in there. The second thing I have to address is, I'm not real happy with the changes made to the Grants Financial Management. It says, each department is responsible for researching and applying for, this is Grant Solicitation, A. Each department is responsible for researching and applying for grants that support needs within their department. The purpose of this policy is to ensure grant funding is solicited with prior approval of the City Manager. The grant application should be, only be made with input from pertinent departments. Grants should be cost beneficial and meet the city's objectives. I would prefer it say, each department is responsible for researching grants that support needs within their department. The City Manager will be informed about available grants by those departments. The City Council will have final approval over which grants are applied for before said application, including any funding emanating from the Bassdrop Economic Development Corporation and/or Visit Bassdrop. The grant should be cost beneficial and meet the city's objectives.
So you have two different areas of concern. Do we want to, you want to talk about one, and then we'll talk about the other?
Well, I've already said most of what I need to say about the first one. I think we don't need to tie this policy to the Government Finance Officers' guidelines. I think we should do it, but I don't think it needs to be written into the policy.
So we refer in the policy that we will turn our financials over for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Award as well, and submit that.
Both of them are geared to ensuring open and transparent government, and the reason we stepped up to the plate and put all of the time and energy into it is your commitment to be very open and transparent. The Government Finance Officers Association Budget Award has 26 requirements in it that are all intended for open and transparent government, so I'm perfectly fine with you taking it out, but it just, it got put in there because y'all had the commitment to open and transparent government, and much like citizens' comment, that's one of those things that we're just trying to make sure the expectation going forward for other budgets is that we meet the goals of council, so that's why it got put in.
And I appreciate that. I don't think it lessens our commitment to transparency by not having it in there. I think the fact that we can brag about it every year that we've won it, that award is a sign signal of our commitment to transparency enough.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
I'm sorry, I had another question.
Councilmember Ennis, I see, as I'm looking at the draft, that the words used to say, the operating budget may be submitted to the GFOA annually for evaluation. Would you be opposed to going back to that, to where it's not mandatory, but it could be submitted? I'm on page 19 of the packet, because I don't have a page number on the policy, so I don't, but it's under Section 4, operating budget, within the first paragraph. It used to have that sentence, that sentence was taken out, and then they've put in that it will be in compliance, and it added all that stuff. And it's page 19 of 104 of this package.
I think that's fine.
Councilmember Ennis, if I'm understanding your comments correctly, it's not that you don't want things to be open and transparent for the citizens, it's that you want the priority to be completing the budget for our citizens, for council to be aware. You don't want it, the guidelines to be dictated by someone else. Am I understanding that correctly?
Exactly.
Council, was there any other comments? Councilmember Rogers?
I'm okay with doing what Mr. Ennis would like.
Councilmember Jackson?
I'm in agreement with him. I mean, I would go along with whatever he recommends. I think it's a good point, we don't need to tout something like that, but to follow it for transparency is fine.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
There's actually two entries on that. One is in 2F, and the other was, that you quoted, Madam Mayor, was in, if I'm reading this correctly, 3A. In 2F, it actually says utilizing standard, generally accepted accounting principles as established by the Government Accounting Standards Board. And I think that's just general accounting principles, correct? And so the language...
Yeah, 2F refers to the actual financial statements, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
And it says it may be presented annually to the GFOA.
That's correct. So you're, so to your point, Madam Mayor, that about leaving the language, the old language of "may be presented" would certainly address all those issues that Councilmember Ennis has brought up. Am I reading that right, Councilmember Ennis?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'm leaning toward just "may be," should solve all the issues there. Is it okay, Councilmember Ennis?
I'm...
He's saying that the "may," I believe, Councilmember Peterson is saying, if you go back to the "may be submitted," if you can do it, great.
That's great, perfect.
And so, that will be put back in, and the sections that were added of the mandatory will be taken out?
That last paragraph.
So you just want the old language for that section?
That last paragraph that says "shall be," and the 90 days be taken out.
So you want to go back to the old language, where it just says "shall be"?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ennis, I would encourage, I'm making the assumption that staff's plan is to bring this back to the next council meeting for a vote. So, when we see the packet for the next council meeting, if you'd review that and make sure you're okay with it, and if, because I've heard council supporting what you were asking, and so if it's not what you want, let Tracy know, so that when we're voting, we're all looking at a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilmember Jackson, you're on board as well, okay. Okay, and then Councilmember Ennis, that was your first item, and your second item...
Is under Section 12, Grants Financial Management, A, Grant Solicitation. I think council ought to be involved in the process before the grants are applied for, rather than as an afterthought.
And for those at home, it's page 24 of this package of 104, if you're trying to follow along.
May I ask what you're trying to achieve, because we can't accept it without your blessing? And there are time deadlines that in some instances, if we have to come to council, we won't meet the deadline. But you reserve the right not to accept them, so if we get something you don't want to fund, then you just choose not to accept it, and we don't take the money. So we're not going to financially obligate you to anything, but if we have to come and get the grant submission blessed in some instances on a short deadline, we won't be able to make it, get it filled out, get it in the packet, and go through the process, because it just sometimes doesn't happen.
I'd be fine if the city, if the mayor was consulted before the grant was applied for.
So you're saying with prior approval, it currently says with prior approval of the City Manager, you're saying you'd like it to say City Manager and Mayor, just so that there's a...
My whole paragraph says each, and I've got copies of this if you want, it'd make it easier.
That might make it easier for, if you can see what he's written down?
Yeah, I have a copy.
Oh, she can.
It could say, each department is responsible for researching grants that support needs within their department. The City Manager will be informed about available grants by those departments. And then we can say that the mayor shall be consulted over which grants are applied for before said application, and then go on from there.
Can I ask what is driving this change?
It has been said that the BEDC grant from last night, that it was not in our budget, and that it was, it was applied for by Tracy last night without council knowing about it, and we should have been consulted before it was taken over there.
And that's fair. That's one of those things that, of all the grants, that didn't show up, and here's why. The state, the, and I get this screwed up, so Mayor, get me straight, am I 4A or 4B?
4B.
Okay. 4B allows for reimbursement of expenses that are applied for that are park. So, in the context of this statement right here, we wouldn't see that as a grant. It was, they get funding that is allowed for by parks, and we submitted a reimbursement for things that would qualify under that. So, in this instance, that's why I'm asking what's driving this, that wouldn't have been triggered, because for us, a grant is CAMPO, it's the Economic Development Administration. This is a corporation that gets specific funding for which we were seeking reimbursement, not a grant, for things that would have been, what I would say to you, were qualified expenditures. So...
Well, that's parsing the verbiage that I used, which can be managed any way. That's why I said including any funding emanating from BEDC or Visit Bassdrop. We can phrase that any way you want to, but I think council needs to be in the food chain as far as knowing what these agreement, what these applications, the applications that are being made to other agencies for money before they're made, because then we have people coming back to us and saying, what is this? We don't know anything about it.
That's easy, we can copy you on the email.
I do know that in the EDC situation, they did have money budgeted for and earmarked for those projects. Not specific projects, but the money was in their budget. What we were asking for was a little above and beyond that, which is why it had to go to their board. But they did have that in their budget as city projects.
Okay, let me, Councilmember Ennis, let me see if I can help with this a little bit, because Councilmember Ennis called me and said, what is this? Because he was getting calls about BEDC. So, in my opinion, it would have been helpful when, on the Innovation Fund, and you talked about you did the starting balance, and here's what's going to, the ins and outs, and here's going to be the ending balance, and for instance, Delgado parking lot, it said completed. If it had said completed, requesting reimbursement from BEDC, then Councilmember Ennis would have known that that's a goes in, goes out. The other comment is, it's all woulda, coulda, shoulda, and we're all trying to get better as we move forward. The request was made last night, instead of coming two weeks before the end of the fiscal year and say, these are the projects that we have, trying to identify the projects in advance, so that the BEDC board would know what was going on, and Councilmember Ennis, to your point, you would know, this is a project that we are, we are going to be asking BEDC to reimburse or whatever. It's communication more than anything else, is what I believe, Councilmember Ennis. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yes, and you knew you were going to go to BEDC, and I don't know what time period you identified the fact that you're going to BEDC, but it would have been nice for us to, for you to address this group and said, by the way, I'm going next week to ask for reimbursement on blah, 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 and we'd have been good to go and helped the door with you go.
I don't think you have to change the policy. Let me kind of explain where this got screwed up. We actually asked for that in July. I typed the letter, and would have bet my paycheck, I hit the send button. But I guess the phone rang, or somebody walked in the door, because the 1st of August, Tracy is following up with Fallon about the letter I sent. The only problem was Fallon had never gotten the letter that I sent. And I'm arguing with Tracy, I know I sent it, I scanned it in, I had it teed up, I'm sure it was in the email, and somebody walked in and said, can I ask you a question? And I didn't hit the send button. And I turned around, closed it out, and just marched on about my business. So, in August, we figured out Fallon had never gotten the letter. So, that's why we got at the tail end of the process, and not at the beginning of their process, and had they gotten the letter when I actually scanned it in, we'd have been in July. So, in the future, I can just forward that letter and say, under the guise of reimbursement, here are the things we've done, and here's what we've asked for, and that's it.
Let me clarify this for in the future, there's an action item that in October, the city identify the projects, and then in the next fiscal year, the city identify the projects in a part of the budget, so that BEDC knows what they're approving. Just communication on both sides for both boards.
What we can do is bring a, I mean, we're going to bring a budget amendment anyway, because now we're receiving these funds, and they're going to cover these expenses, so that's kind of council's...
And that's when we, I guess in our head, would have known you would have got it, because we can't get that money without you putting it in the budget, but I hear you, we can very easily fix that.
So, I don't want to put words in Councilmember Ennis's mouth, but I want to make a statement, and you can agree or not. It was the, I've been in 97 budget meetings in the last 60 days, and I have no idea what they're talking about. How did this happen? Is that the issue? Councilmember is nodding his head, yes.
Yes.
I got some lights over here. Councilmember Rogers?
All right, so, mind if I show you the way the grants work now, prior to this change, because I've sat up here for a while, where the chief had came in, said he wants to apply for this grant, we said, go ahead and apply for it. So right now, they bring it to us before they apply for it, is that the way it works right now?
Only if the grant requires a resolution from council. A lot of our grants are small, maybe park grants from LCRA, or, yes, they have to bring forward a grant that would require that resolution from council.
Okay. I don't sign anything you guys haven't approved.
Oh, no, I just want, I didn't know, but...
So if it requires that, then it requires a resolution.
Okay, so we're not changing those parts, because some will have the resolutions. The other question I'm wanting is if we go out for grants, and we're awarded a grant, and then it's brought to the council, and we deny the grant, I just feel that's kind of fair to all the people that we beat out on the grant, saying now we know we don't want it. See what I'm saying? We fight for this grant, it's awarded to us, but then we push it back, saying now, well, we don't want it. So that just seems counterproductive, kind of? I'd hate to win grants, and then the council doesn't want it, then that whole process has to start again for those other people that wanted to win, and they didn't, because we won, but we didn't want it. See what I'm saying? So I don't know how to fix the process on what you're saying, but I hate to push back money that we, I don't know.
So, Councilmember Jackson, did you?
No, I'm in agreement with what she's saying. I mean, I had a situation, we had a situation like that with the county. We, there was a park grant, a huge park grant, I mean, like a million dollars, and the county decided they didn't want it after they got it, and they said, we'll just send it back, and we'll wait to try to get another one. Well, you know, once you apply for certain grants and things, and you get it, it's hard to, with so many people wanting grants, it's hard to be, to apply and be accepted again, to be honest about it. So, I can see that if you apply for a grant and you get it, then you decide you don't want it, or you turn it down, that puts a hardship on the applicant.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Well, I think we're conflating the, in some cases, the issue of grants and funding agreements. On a lot of, on a lot of grants, it's based on a point system, a scoring system. So if an entity who has applied for a grant and wins that grant, decides that they don't want to utilize that grant, it goes to the next person on the scoring sheet, or the next entity on the scoring sheet. That's normally how it works, and people should petition for that if they find... And, and, and people should petition for that if they find out, other entities should petition for that if they find out that the winning grantee, uh, had decided to forego that grant. So I think it's a pretty easy process in that case.
I, is there any chance that we're back to communication? And could it be as simple as just making sure if you've applied for a grant, that you mention it in the operations report, or it's mentioned in an update somewhere or something?
I, I sure hope so, because we're creating some, we're, we're, we are creating a bat for a problem that doesn't require that. And the city manager will be informed about available grants. There's some that we're just not gonna apply for. And to your point, Councilmember Rogers, that's my role as city manager. There are some grants that I've got staff that think it's a good idea, but I don't, and they won't. And the reason for that is, is, is back in the day, firemen and police officers used to be applied for by grants. And it's great. You get, you get five new firemen, free of charge. Well, you, when you read the fire print, in year two, it's twenty-five percent, in year three, it's fifty percent, in year four, it's seventy-five percent, in year five, I got five new guys, one hundred percent freight. And the answer to that would be eh. They're not gonna sign off on that without my approval, regardless of what you've got, because part of what you've hired me to do is to make those decisions. And I think Councilmember Jackson brings up a great, um, point. If we're going to apply for a million dollar loan that has a twenty-five percent match, you're gonna bless it whether you're supposed to or not, because I'm not going to allocate two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's a policy decision. So I think that now that I understand the issue, it's just communication. Y'all wanna be copied on that email, problem solved, we don't have to amend the policy. And, and my apologies, had it happened the way it should've, it might not have been the issue that it was. Um, but I can see how it got drug out that it was, and I'll own that full tilt. It was not Tracy, it was not Fallon, and that's an easy fix. When we do that on an annual basis, y'all will know full well what we do, and problem solved.
So back to, just overall for the budget, part of the transparency is when citizens call a council member, that the council member knows what they're talking about, and, and knows what the discussion item is. So that, that's also gives transparency, because when one of us is forced to say, I don't really know what you're talking about, it's like, and you're on council, and you don't know what's going on. So, um, Councilmember Ennis, this was your issue, it's been discussed. I want to give you the floor back to see if you have any other comments, or if you're satisfied. It, it's your issue.
I'm satisfied.
Yay. Okay. Communication, right? Any other financial policy comments that we need to go over?
Couple of questions for clarification. Was the financial policy reviewed and approved in twenty-eighteen?
It was as a part of the budget, but I, as I explained to Councilmember Rogers, we adopted it separately in twenty-seventeen, should have done it in twenty-eighteen, but that budget was such a big deal last year, it got overlooked. But it should be adopted annually, just like the investment policy, just like the purchasing policy, and will from here on out.
Separate as a...
Yes, ma'am.
If that's the case, can, can, can we allude to that, and to where you have the approvals for the other year?
Yeah.
And that would help out. And the other one is just...
Like approved by budget or something?
Right. And the other, and the other issue is on, uh, 4A, on page fourteen. I, I'd like to see that wording in there. I think it'd make it easier on the city manager if we just changed a little wording on that first paragraph, where it says, the city manager transmits the document to city council thirty days prior to the commencement of the fiscal year per city charter. Can we add the words in there, no more than thirty days? Because that kinda puts you in a strict timeline.
It's on page nineteen of the packet.
That's actually straight out of the city charter, so I'm not sure.
So it's, it's, so thirty days, so thirty days prior to the start of the commencement of the fiscal year is a drop-dead date. If the city manager wanted to give it to us thirty-two days prior to...
Oh, I can beat it. I can't go...
Right.
I can't go less than.
But the, but the language says absolutely thirty days, but if it's in the city charter, then I would have to have a charter up.
Yes, and so the, the charter says thirty days, and I don't think you can do the job you were elected to do in that. So I'm gonna give it to you always the first meeting in August.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, that you could comply with, with that requirement, thirty days. That's all I got.
Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rogers? I apologize.
I just have, um, two things I was requesting. On, on when you bring appropriations, where she moves it from one line to another, you know what I'm saying? You always bring us a whole big list of...
The fund summary?
Yeah.
All-fund summary?
Or when she's, she, she has to bring it for us to approve, for us to move it from one line to another?
Yes.
Some amendments. Can you not bring quite so many at one time? Because the last time you brought like six, and it was like, okay.
Uh, well, we try not to bring them very often. We try to not have to bring those amendments.
Maybe when you get like three, bring us three, and not just like bang them up where there's like, I just remember the last time...
Well, when I bring the one for the end of the year for fiscal nineteen, we'll only wanna bring it once, and it's gonna be whatever we need to amend that budget.
Oh, I understand that. I just said, sometimes you say, I'll, I'll bring that to you later, I'll bring it to you later. I just was asking if you just don't pile them up too much before you bring us, it makes it, makes my brain hurt.
Okay.
So, so when we get specific requests, we certainly want to meet them, but I need a little more guidance than that.
Well, if I, a couple agendas ago, she had like six of them that she's moving, this is from here, and this is from here. So it really made it hard to, to watch, to understand the movements. So if she could just bring a few less at a time.
So i- if we bring something every time, you'll be fine with that?
We don't have to wait every time, but just don't pile them up as many as we had the last time.
So we bring what we need?
Sure.
But that'll be piling them on. That, that's what she's trying to say. We, we get to a point where she's doing some kind of report that generates that.
Well, then, then I don't, if you don't mind, when you're bringing a bunch of them to us, maybe explain a little bit, so it's easier to follow the lines than just, it's easy for you, because that's what you look at all day?
Yeah.
But it's really hard for the ones that...
I mean, I try to explain it in this staff report, but I'll, I'll just try to do more...
Just more basic language.
Specific...
There were two documents, the all-fund summary, you know, here's the new all-fund summary, that's a good way to follow bottom lines and funds. And then the document that you did with the transfers, the summary of the transfers, that is real helpful. So if you're doing budget amendments, and you bring a new transfer sheet, so that they, we get, when the dust settles...
Yeah, usually budget amendments have nothing to do with transfers.
At all?
Not usually.
Because some, usually, to her point, you're messing with more than one pot.
And that's where it gets confusing. That's what I was trying to...
That, that is, if that's what generates the budget amendment.
Okay.
Usually it's not between funds. Usually it's, I'm either adding an expense that's using fund balance that's available, or I'm adding revenue and adding an expense.
That's a pass.
That's a net neutral. So I will look at those...
We, we, we'll...
I'll just ask more questions.
Communication being good.
When you bring them, and just be prepared that I'm confused.
I will try to be clear on my staff report.
So here's what I'm gonna do. We're gonna make James, um, Tracy's buddy. And until James understands the budget amendment, it can't go on the agenda. Because he's learning finance, so he would represent you. So when he can explain it, it gets on there. So they're gonna work, because he's learning finance. And so when James can explain the budget amendment, we have a format that we think you will. So that's how we'll solve the problem.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted a little basic, so I could feel, feel it a little bit better.
And, and Chief Alkel's new buddy is Councilmember Rogers. She still has the floor, and then I'll go to Councilmember Ennis.
And then on, one other thing, on your fixed asset inventory, I just was wondering if there's a way, like even in the budget, we can somehow document the date that it happened? Because it says that you're gonna do it once a year. The city manager told me that it happens once a year. Just wondering, kinda like on, will you approve this? I don't know, have it's listed somewhere in the budget, that this happened on this date, it's final?
So, Councilmember Rogers, the place for that to happen would be in the audit. And she can flag the auditors, that when they come and talk to you, that they can note when that actually happened, because that's an audit function, not a budget function. So she can just clue our auditors, because they come every year and present you the CAFRA. And as a part of that presentation, they can, they can talk about when those, um, actual functions happened, and how they randomly checked it as a part of their checks and balance process for the audit.
Oh, that'll be perfect. It's just that I'm set on, you know, come off the pit, there's so many things that say we're gonna do it each year, and all of a sudden, we have a pile of mud, because, oh, we didn't do it that year. You know, I just wanna try to make sure that we're all shaking.
It's required by the audit. We do it every year. But yes, I have the backup of all of the directors signing off on their inventory.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Ennis?
We probably already solved this, but to Councilmember Rogers' point, I think your form on the budget amendments is difficult, and I, I really have to work at that. I don't know what you could do to make it simpler. I don't know if it's a... Okay, there you go.
I, um, I have used the form that was created prior to me coming here. I just continue to use the same format, but I can certain, I mean, it makes sense to me.
We need the Waldron form.
Um, but I can certainly look at how some other cities present that, just to see if there's a cleaner, uh, version.
And I can't even tell you what would make it easier for me, so I...
Maybe a one-pager that just has the funds, and I don't know.
You got forty percent of the council saying, what we got is not great, so it's an opportunity to improve. And we're sa- and communication is, is what we're trying to do here. Okay, council, any other words of wisdom for them, so that they can bring us a policy back that is clean, and you are prepared to vote on? Any other items? Alrighty. Good job, Ms. Waldron. And she gets to stay with us, because, and it is nine oh-three, we've got two more items. Everybody okay if we knock them out? Yeah, absolutely. The, yeah, and, because I know you're aware of this next one. Um, 2E, discuss the Fairview Cemetery Memorial Tree Program. And that is page twenty-seven of the packet.
Yes, and I know we've referenced this several times, but we're just bringing it to you so that you, uh, are aware of the program that the advisory board has been, um, talking about, and trying to work through some of the, uh, logistics. Um, just as, as a background, when we did a holistic review of the ordinance, one of the discussions was trees, and whether we were gonna allow plot owners to plant trees. And the unanimous vote on that was that we didn't feel like that was a very good idea because of encroachment on plots, other people's plots, and that we would be able to provide this program so that we can identify, and maybe take four plots and say, this is a good area for a tree, there's not really many trees around here. So it kind of, it does a lot of things, um, but it, it helps someone honor their loved one in that way. There'll be a plaque that will have that information on there, but it also, um, helps us replace trees that have been lost from disease or from storms, and be able to control the placement of those trees within a cemetery. Let me see if I covered. So, um, things that were vetted was the actual donation amount, the types of trees. We actually talked about this at several meetings. We do have an arborist on staff, and they met with our board and talked about the type of trees that we would like to, um, make available in this program, and also the locations of where the trees would be planted. The donation amount we settled on was six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This would cover a three-hundred-gallon tree, thirty-gallon tree, sorry, that would be big, wouldn't it? It would include the plaque, um, two years of maintenance, and, um, the trees would be controlled as to when they're planted, to give them the best opportunity to succeed. And so, um, between October and April. And so I know I included the brochure in the packet for you.
And that you said this, was, was it unanimously approved by Fairview Cemetery?
Yes. And on our next agenda, we would, uh, be bringing forth a resolution just to, um, approve the program, and...
Councilmember Brenz?
As the liaison just at the cemetery board, uh, they've worked hard on this, as, as Ms. Waldron. And, uh, I think it's an excellent program, and I certainly recommend it to council.
Council, do you have any, Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yeah, you know, I commend the, the advisory board. This is well called out, well presented. I, I, I completely agree with you.
All right, yay. Good job. We just want our budget amendments to be that easy. No, I'm, I'm, okay. So, um, on to 2G, the very, very last one. Annual review of the purchasing policy by city council. Ms. Waldron?
Hi. Colin, can you take me there, second for? Um, yeah, so...
Page thirty-five, council.
This policy, uh, was actually vetted in October of last year, and, and we did a, a very holistic review of the policy, and, uh, legal counsel was involved in just making sure that our policy was fol- following state purchasing laws. So there was a little less to edit on this particular policy, because we've done that recent, um, review. But we did have a few things we wanted to change. Um, under the competitive purchasing requirements, we just wanted to get some legal language in there. I spoke to, um, Eileen, I believe, or Robert Bork was. And so that's the extra paragraph that we've added. It has a lot to do with, um, our staff interpreting the policy, and wanting to make sure that we've covered them when they're having to go out and do an emergency repair on an AC. Um, it had to do with the vendors, uh, being used multiple times during the year, that might actually equal the three thousand, and we wanted to make sure they were covered under emergency purchases. So that's why that language has been added. Also, on the thirty days, um, you know, we, we want to honor the thirty-day law to get invoices paid in the thirty days, but we did want to stipulate in our policy that sometimes the invoice date that we receive, we've not received the services, we've not received the product. And so, um, we want our policy to state that, you know, that time clock starts when we've received that product, or we've received that service, not that arbitrary inventory...
So you're implying that sometimes they're more prompt with the invoice than they are with the product?
And we just want to have that extra language in our policy to cover us for that. Um, and that's really all.
I'm sure our citizens would like us to not shovel the money till we've received the product, so that seems like a logical thing.
Yeah, those were the major things that were changed in that particular policy.
Mayor Protim Nelson, you do deal with purchasing in your job more than the rest of us on council. Do you have thoughts that you would like to share with us?
No thoughts. I, I like some of the cleanup that, that had been done. I, I do have a couple of questions, though. Can, can you describe what a purchasing summary is?
Yes, the purchasing summary is a one-page summary that basically, um, it has checklists on there that comply with law, like are you purchasing from a co-op? Are you, is it a professional service? Um, it allows them to summarize the quotes that they've received, and, and identify on it which vendor they're choosing. Um, you know, like if they're not choosing the lowest bid, our policy states that the city manager has to sign off on that. So they have to state on there why they're not choosing the lowest. Sometimes the lowest isn't the best, they just need to define that on the summary. So it's really just kind of a, a one-page summary that they would put their quotes behind. It's the page that all the signatures go onto, and we keep those and put them with the purchasing, uh, order.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Protim, it keeps me from doing a scavenger hunt on the obvious. So all of the things in your policy that we have to verify, all of the state law, is on the front page, and all the documentation is behind it. So if they haven't followed the law, they got to own it on the front sheet. Don't make me hunt for it to figure out you haven't done what you're supposed to.
I love it. And also...
It helps us a lot in, in finance, because it's right there.
And also address the sole source and all that.
It, there's a box for sole source, they better have a letter, yeah, yeah.
That's also, that's why I asked.
And you, you do have the floor, but for clarification for me, that like the best values, that's one thing that we talked about even on the road most recently, that there may be a best value for that, and not just low bidder, correct? So that's the...
Sometimes there's shipping issues in that that low bidder can't provide what we need in a timely manner. And so even though they're the lowest bidder...
Okay. Mayor Protem Nelson, still your floor.
And do we still have, or do we currently have a fleet appropriations list that's referred to in the purchasing policy?
Yes, we have completed our list, and we will start a new one October 1st.
And obviously, we know why I'm asking that question, to make sure that we don't have issues.
So what happens is, is that when the budget is adopted, all of those are put on a list. Tracy signs off on the list. When they order something, they sign off on it. It comes to me, and I initial that we've ordered that one. So by the time it's done, it's got three, four, five, six initials on it. And I periodically check it every time it comes in just so we don't have to have that chat again. Yes, sir.
And I, council may or may not be aware that I am reviewing checks over $10,000 that are written every week. And so when I get the packet of information, I know what vehicle number it is, and I can see that documentation. I feel as though they have taken steps to make sure we never have that problem again.
It certainly helps address Councilmember Rogers' question about asset management. So, thank you very much.
Okay, that's it from Mayor Protem Nelson? All right. Any other purchasing policy amendments or adjustments that we want to make? All right, council, it is 9:12. We have completed all of the items. We've pulled 3A, we know why, and that means, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, mayor, motion to adjourn.
It is 9:12, and we are adjourned. Thank you, council, for your time. Thank you, staff, city manager.